Wow.
Yeah, we couldn't do what we do without our volunteers. Anyone out there wants to volunteer? Just call.
Carmen is the gal.
Yes, they do everything. And so we have teachers that will be, have been students. You know, we have 25 art classes. A lot of those teachers now were the students, you know, that first started it and now they're teaching their own classes.
That's wonderful.
Yeah.
Well, I can see if you have learned to enrich your life, that there's going to be a tendency to want to give back. Dan, I didn't ask you, you were a professor of what?
I was a professor of education. I started out doing literacy research and I trained a lot of English teachers and taught all the reading courses and curriculum courses there. And then halfway through my career, I went into administration and I ended up associate dean of the School of Education and then director of the teacher education program.
Oh boy, so this was in fact, the loss of vision was wrenching.
There was so much to read and, you know, and as I said, the university was so wonderful because they gave me a reader, you know, they provided me with any type of device that I needed to help me perform my job better.
Sure.
The thing that got a little scary was most of our classes, because we taught adults, you know, people who were coming back to school would be teachers.
Yes.
Most of the classes were at night and night was awful for me to wander around. So, you know, stairways and things and I thought, I really need some help here, you know. And one of the white cane training was so important.
Right, the night blindness really gets you.
Absolutely.
It's totally different.
Well, now, you were telling me, Carmen, about the facility that is in fact, training these service dogs. I didn't realize that you had a facility at the Braille Institute.
No.
Oh, did I misunderstand?
Yeah, this, these dogs are from Guide Dogs for the Blind, which is in San Rafael.
There we go.
All of the blindness, but that brings us to, good segue, that all the blindness institutions all refer each other. So, because we all do different things. So, this may in fact, we did a workshop for people who maybe wanted to use a guide dog because you see, getting a guide dog helps with your mobility.
Sure.
So that, that one step, you know, not it's not for everybody, only 2% have dogs. But, so Braille Institute and all the different organizations, we all refer each other, we're all inclusive because our goal is the same, is to help blind and visually impaired people to live a rich, full life.
Well, we happen to have some video because Carmen recently gave Aging in L.A. a tour of their facility, visiting a few of the classes offered on a daily basis by the Braille Institute. Here's the first part of our visit.
We are in the kitchen area here where we teach cooking, all kinds, whether it be microwave, electric or gas. And we teach how to do it safely and effectively. Plus, we teach independent living skills, home management, all designed so people can keep their independence. And the person who teaches this class is Mindy Leventhal.
Vicki's over here. She's making individual pie crusts that we made from scratch. We're making miniature quiches today. Six of them will be crab meat with cream cheese and the other six are going to be quiche l'airé. This is Melissa. She's baking some oatmeal cookies.
First, I've had to measure and we all learn how to measure with, I don't know if you can tell on camera, but you see they have dots on there, like this has three dots for those of us who are visually impaired and do baking and cooking just like everyone else. And so we're making oatmeal cookies from scratch and so measured out, you know, the flour and the sugar and eggs and just beating that in the mixer right now.
I've been coming to Braille for two years and in Mindy's class, where I'm learning how to use cooking tools without hurting myself. I'm doing the grating and I've learned how to use the knives correctly. I'm really enjoying it and meeting the other students and seeing all the different ways of making good food, really good.
Today, we worked with some knife skills with Marjorie and we were chopping some nuts. So why don't you show them the technique I showed you? She holds the knife in one hand and the top of the knife with the other hand so we know that there will be no fingers underneath the blade. And she rocks the knife and she's able to feel safe and she's using chef's knife, which a lot of people are afraid of using, but we teach them the proper techniques and safety tips. And we teach them that accidents happen from dull knives, not sharp knives. Dull knives bounce off the food.
And as you can see, I can also gather my nuts as they spread out, pull them back together and keep rocking the knife.
Here we are at the music class that David Simpson is teaching. This is one of several groups that we have. This is the Luminaries, which is an all women's choir.
Two, three, four.
Okay, the next part, here are the lyrics, and here is the best part.
And here is the best part.
You have a head start.
You have a head start.
If you are among the very young at heart. And here is the best part. You have a head start. If you are among the very young at heart. What a wonderful piece and of course, a nice inspirational song, which reminds me, Dan, you love music.
Yes.
And one of the reasons for moving downtown was so that you could be close to the symphony.
And the opera.
Yes. The opera's a bit much for me.
We could win you over.
I see. Carmen, it is so important to mention this because I know members of our audience are thinking, well, the Braille Institute, what have they got for me? In fact, there are many free services there for people.
Yes, and let me just mention a few. First of all, we want everyone to know we have free services. Count them, free, F-R-E-E. For everybody.
I didn't understand.
A lot of times I was telling you, Paul, that people think it costs a lot of money. No, it doesn't. So, we want you to know that. We have classes, over 150 classes throughout the year in different things like art or Braille reading and writing, cooking. We have a Dodger class that Wes Parker teaches. He was a Dodger.
Yes, he was.
Every year, takes like 30 people to the game and sits next to each of them and tells them what that player's thinking out there.
Outstanding.
We have salsa dancing, yoga, I mean, whatever you can think of. Every class, there's no such thing as a frivolous class because it could be that cooking class that makes that person think, gee, I can still do all the things I did before.
Right.
You know? And we also have free Braille services. We produce millions of pages in Braille every year and our library for the blind and physically handicapped, which offers over 90,000 titles of talking books.
Fantastic. Carmen, it's time to take a short break. So when we return, we will continue our visit to the Braille Institute. Please stay tuned, we'll be back in just a minute.
You know, honey, I've been thinking, you're not prepared for an earthquake. Take this antique vase your mom got you. If the big one hit, be a goner. Or this clay penguin you made in third grade. History. By simply strapping loose furniture to the wall and putting putty under loose items, you can prevent serious injury and damage. Nothing is safe, even poor Uncle Petey. Get the message? Be prepared.
The Department of Public Works Bureau of Contract Administration keeps the city's projects on track, ensuring safety first and fairness always, from the streets all the way to the stars.
Welcome back to Aging in L.A. I'm Paul Peterson and today we are finding out all about the Braille Institute. Our guests are Carmen Appelgren, Community Relations Coordinator at the Braille Institute, and Dan Donlin, former professor at UC Riverside, who became a student at the institute when macular degeneration impaired his vision. Thank you both again for joining us. This is utterly fascinating. Now, how many students, how many people are on campus at the Braille Institute on any given day?
Any given day, it's about 150 to 200 students. They'll be on our campus, yes.
Wow.
And we have, I just wanted to mention, we have centers all over Southern California. Our mothership is in Los Angeles.
It is the mothership.
Since 1919, we are old. And then Rancho Mirage, Santa Barbara, San Diego, and in Orange County and Anaheim. So we cover with our direct services all of Southern California. And we have outreach programs, so we go to senior centers because transportation, Paul, is a big deal for people who's in there.
Southern California, amen.
And it's because it's not a, it's a car place, you know? So, we go, we take our show on the road to go to them also because not everybody can get in.
Do you remember Alan Sherman's great description of Los Angeles? It was 28 shopping centers looking for a city.
Exactly. And that was probably a hundred.
But that's good that you're mobile.
Yes.
And of course, I assume that there are transportation services available for people to come to the campus?
Oh, definitely. We have routes, we have 13 different routes. This is at our L.A. center. So we have a fleet of, we come in from San Pedro, actually, we have a pickup here, Torrance as far as Santa Clarita, and we have a bus that comes in from Pomona since 1964.
Well, now, Dan, tell me a little bit about this. You were a piano player and now you're getting instruction and help, so you can do jazz?
Jazz, yeah, right. I've been in the program four years and as I said, I would hate to pay private, exactly the quality of musical instruction I've had. And he started with individual lessons, then he said, would you like to play in a jazz group? And then we started the Monday afternoon jazz group. Now we've got a Latin jazz class.
Fantastic.
It's, it's, it's been unbelievable.
Now, you mentioned a name, you're a teacher, because we have some of the best studio musicians in the world out here.
Our teacher is David Simpson.
David Simpson, Jay Roberts.
They're two music teachers and they are, and they're both professionals. I mean, they all do gigs on weekends.
They're 100-karat diamonds.
Yes, they are.
That's so fantastic. Now, we have people who are watching right now who are caregivers and perhaps a loved one is beginning to suffer the effects of deteriorating vision. Is, I want to make sure people know how to get in touch with you, Carmen.
Well, they can just call us at 1-800-BRAIL.
Now, that's pretty darn simple.
Yeah, 1-800-B-R-A-I-L-L-E. Or we have a website, brailleinstitute.org.
Right.
And we will be glad to talk to anybody. And if someone does have a caregiver and that caregiver needs to be with that student, they can come with them to Braille Institute. You know, they can accompany them with several people that have caregivers.
What is the youngest ages that are there? I mean, I know we focus on senior issues, but...
Well, let me tell you, we start with age zero to over 100.
Wow.
Couple little factors for you. We do child development with the zero to before they go to kindergarten. This is a wonderful program. We have about 200 kids in it right now. So this is where, say someone like Children's Hospital has some parents that have a blind child, they give us, you know, we have a partnership with them. They will say, here you can call the Braille Institute. We have a counselor that will go into that home, work with the parents and with the baby and the siblings till that child's ready to go to preschool. They go to a regular preschool. Because sighted kids, you know, they have no problems with anybody with disabilities, right? They're just kids.
Well, of course, they don't even notice.
They don't even notice.
Earlier in the program, we dropped in on cooking and vocal music classes. So we have some tape, let's see what's in store as we continue our tour of classes offered by the Braille Institute.
This is our computer room and Frances Daniels is the teacher of adaptive technology. And Frances has taught here for many, many years. She loves it and the students love him.
This is a facility where we teach blind people how to use access technology. We have large print, which is Zoom text for Windows, and that shows information in different sizes of large print. We also are using JAWS, which stands for Job Access with Speech, and that's a Windows screen reader. This class is currently working on a project where they're typing documents, learning Microsoft Word and various applications to, so that they can use it in their own personal life.
We're here in front of the creative arts room that we're going to visit where Londa Velasquez is the teacher and they teach everything from ceramics to printmaking to sculpture. The sky's the limit.
This class, we have tile pictures and we use some adaptive techniques so the students can work on their own. Here we've put down a raised glue line so the students can feel the space that they're going to fill in. A lot of the students bring pictures or ask for pictures and we draw them out for them or they'll bring a picture from home. But this makes them independent so they're able to work on their own with some small little adaptive techniques. Mary's working on a picture of one of her guide dogs and she loves to do tile pictures and she always brings me difficult things, black on black, but she brings me pictures of the dog and I tell her where to fill in and she cuts all the tiles. Emery's cutting all his tiles into tiny little pieces. Helen's working with a volunteer and she's working on some ceramic pieces. What are you making, Helen?
I'm making a, what would you call it? Like a hanging basket to put plants in.
A wall.
Oh, a wall, a wall. Dry flowers, dried weeds.
This is a sculpture by Seaward that was donated by Helen Lindhurst and it is a sculpture of our founder, Bob Atkinson, who was a real cowboy who was blinded in 1912 and he became the founder of Braille Institute in 1919. The book that he is reading is Real Braille. This is the Vista Store. We have many items here for the blind and visually impaired. Talking watches, talking clocks, talking calculators, talking scales, thermometers, anything that can help the blind person live an independent life. We also have large print address books, large print check displays, color readers, any kind of item you can think of that will help the blind or visually impaired person to live an independent life with the help of all of these different kind of cooking items, et cetera.
Well, and Carmen, this is great to know because many people don't know where to go to get these assistive devices.
That's right.
That's fantastic.
They can come here, they can go online, the catalog is online and you can just call us up and order it and our clerks there will spend as much time as you need to describe anything.
Tell me about the library quickly.
The library for the blind and physically handicapped is part of the National Library Service, Library of Congress.
Yes.
What I want you to know about that is not just for people who are visually impaired, but anyone who's print impaired, anyone who has MS or MD, can't move their arms, is a paraplegic, maybe has very bad arthritis, they all can get the talking books.
Well, the talking books are the greatest thing on earth, especially when you're in the car. Dan, the mobility training you received, tell me a bit about that.
That was one of Braille's greatest gifts to me was Carolyn Bryant, who was my mobility teacher. She came out to my house every Wednesday and worked with me a full morning on getting me around all the downtown streets, how to cross with the traffic, how to get on every single bus, subway, and she just made my life free.
That's what we do at Braille Institute. We give people the tools and the programs so that they can do the things that they want to do. They can, the sky's the limit. They can still do everything they did before.
Well, it's centrally located, I mean, come on, Vermont and Melrose. You have a whole feeder system, it's like having, nah, I won't call it minor leagues, but teams in other towns.
And resources, all the resources that are available for people, we let them know about those too.
Okay, now, once again, I want to get the contact information back out there.
1-800-BRAIL, B-R-A-I-L-L-E, or brailleinstitute.org. Come visit us online.
Exactly. It's, and thank you for bringing Val and Albert, they were really quite well behaved.
They're good partners. Yeah, they are, they enjoyed this a lot.
Well, Carmen, Dan, our time is up for today's edition of Aging in L.A. And thank you so much for being here, Carmen and Community Relations Coordinator at the Braille Institute, and Dan Donlin, who became a student at the institute when macular degeneration impaired his vision and made the right choice to go seek help. And now, it's time for today's Senior Stat Shot. A rapidly increasing proportion of the aging population experiences eye problems that make simple daily tasks difficult or impossible even when wearing glasses or contact lenses. Severe eye problems are not just a matter of getting older. The risk of severe eye problems has been found to increase significantly with age, particularly in those over age 65. In the 18 to 44 years bracket, about 5.5% of Americans have had vision loss. For those 45 to 64 years old, 12% suffer a decline in their vision. From 65 to 74 years of age, 13.5% have vision loss. And if you are over 75, 22% of seniors your age have vision loss. So, compared to Americans 18 to 44 years of age, seniors 65 to 74 years of age were nearly three times more likely to report vision loss. And those over 75 years of age were more than four times as likely as those 18 to 44 years of age to have had vision loss. And that's today's Senior Stat Shot. The Los Angeles Department of Aging produces this program with City View Channel 35 so that seniors living in Los Angeles and surrounding communities are well informed on the many issues that face them in everyday life. And also to let you know of the many services that the Department of Aging offers our senior citizens. And we'd like to hear from you with comments on the program, what you like, what you think can be improved, and your ideas for future programs. Please give us a call, the number's there on your screen, area code 213-252-4088. That's 213-252-4088. Call us with your comments and ideas, we look forward to hearing from you. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thank you so much for watching. We'll see you next time.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council Meeting for Wednesday, February 23, 2011. We're in the John Farrow Council Chambers where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday, 10 a.m. Welcome to those folks that are here in council chambers, as well as those viewers who are joining us on Channel 35, on the internet at lacity.org, or on council phone at 213-621-CITY, as well as our guests that are in Van Nuys and San Pedro City Council Chambers. We hope folks in Van Nuys are enjoying the day after their 100th birthday. Congratulations again. We are awaiting a quorum, but we do have nine members. Thank you to Councilmembers Weezar, Coretts, Krikorian, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Rosendahl, and Zine, with myself, that's nine members, and Mr. Smith is excused today. So that just leaves Mr. Weston, Mr. Reyes, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Cardness, and Mr. Alacon Tardy, if they'll please join us as soon as possible so we can begin the meeting. Meantime, there are cards available and agendas for public. If you wish to be heard on any items, please fill out a speaker card and hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms and we'll be sure to get that in the mix. All items have either had a public hearing in committee or will have one here in the full council. Again, Councilmembers Alacon, Card... Again, council members Alacon, Cardenas, Hahn, Reyes, and Weston, if you'll please join us for quorum as soon as possible. Thank you. Good morning. We have four members up in the housing committee, Reyes, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Alacon, and Mr. Weston. So we're gonna get one of those members come down and put away Ms. Hahn. While we're waiting our last member, I'd like to recognize Mr. Rosendahl for brief recognition.
How you doing?
Pleasure.
And we do have Ms. Hahn here for quorum, so very briefly, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. You know, we go through all kinds of situations here, but this is a good moment for me to talk about Peter Hilton, who's standing right next to me, folks. He's a lieutenant in the Los Angeles Department of Transportation. I'm gonna give him a certificate, and let me just read it to you if I could. They want the microphone, isn't that great? "On behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, I want to acknowledge your meritorious actions in preparation for the thirteen-point-one marathon, Los Angeles. Your extraordinary efforts to notify the community dramatically decreased the number of cars towed in advance of this half marathon. You went above and beyond the call of duty, sparing countless residents from a very costly inconvenience. Your dedication to the citizens of Los Angeles was fully evident, and I want to sincerely thank you. Your leadership sets a tremendous example for all city employees." Let me tell you what happened, folks. We had this marathon that goes down Venice Boulevard, and we tow cars before it. Who didn't get the message? Well, this gentleman was supposed to start work at five in the morning and get the process going. He showed up at midnight, he banged on doors, he went into bars, he went into restaurants, told them, "Get rid of those cars out of the right of way, or they're gonna be towed." He, in fact, saved hundreds of people from having to do it. That's the kind of dedication in our great city that I see as a fantastic expression of this great family. So I just want to congratulate you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Good work. Appreciate you very much. With that, we do have a--
Just a quick word. I just wanna say, I accept this certificate for the supervisors and officers that also worked that day. They did a tremendous job themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. And, Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll. Alacon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weezer, Coetz, Krikorian, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present, and a quorum. Mr. President. Thank you. First order of business. Approval of the minutes. All right, Mr. Labonge moves, and Mr. Weezer second, without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business. Commendatory resolutions for approval. Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Parks second, without objection. Those are approved as well. If we can run through the agenda.
Items one through eleven are items noted for public hearing. There is a recommendation from the Department to receive and file items one and seven in asmuch as the debt has been paid. Council has cards on items one and nine.
Okay, we'll call those special for cards from the public. Any other members wishing to call special items one through nine, one through eleven, excuse me? If not, one through eleven, let's go ahead on the balance and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items twelve through eighteen are items for which public hearings have been held. A committee report for item twelve has been submitted and circulated. Further, there's a request to continue item fourteen until March one.
Okay, we'll continue item fourteen without objection until the first of March. Any specials, twelve through eighteen? Mr. Parks?
Could we hold twelve, so we speak with Reckon Park, and on thirteen, just a minor verbal correction, that in the summary, line three, it should be two thousand and ten, not two thousand and eleven?
Okay, we'll change that in the summary, two thousand and ten, not two thousand and eleven. There's no other specials, let's take up the balance, including thirteen with that correction. Please open the roll. That's thirteen, fifteen through eighteen. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
You have an ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items twelve through eighteen are items for which public hearings have been, excuse me, sir. Items nineteen through twenty-four are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, if there's no objection to consideration, those are before us.
Mr. President, there are requests from members to continue item twenty-one to February twenty-fifth, item twenty-two to March first, and items, excuse me, item twenty-three to March second.
If there's no objection, we will continue those. I know that we continue to have members of the public who come here for those items, and police members as much as possible. If we can continue those to a date certain in which we will actually discuss them, or else take some other action, that would be our preference here. But without objection, we'll continue those. But please, if we can figure out a way to do that, and even post it online ahead of time, that those are going to be continued for members of the public, we will strive to do that for you. Anybody wishing to call nineteen, twenty, or twenty-four special, and do we have any cards on those? Mr. Clerk, do you have any cards on the other items?
Item twenty-four, sir.
Okay. If nobody wishes to call nineteen or twenty special, let's go ahead and open the roll on those two. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next items.
Items twenty-five through twenty-nine are items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Mr. Parks, any of these want to do an open session?
Yes, I would recommend on the closed session items that item twenty-six be an open session. It's a tax settlement, and the city benefits a hundred fifty thousand. The item twenty-five is led, a lead by CD eleven, and item twenty-nine is CD, I'm sorry, item--
I'm sorry, Mr. Parks, we didn't quite hear what you said.
No, I'm just saying, on item, what I would recommend for open session is twenty-six.
Okay.
The others, closed--
Keep her closed.
The others would be closed session, but--
Okay.
Number twenty-nine and twenty-five did not come through budget and finance. The council office would take the lead on those.
Thank you, Mr. Let's go ahead then on item twenty-six, if we can run through that. On item twenty-six, there is a recom-- Excuse me? Okay, we'll call that special for card from public. Next items. Oh, no, sorry, we have special agenda. It is after ten fifteen. If we can call the roll for the special agenda, please.
Alacon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weezer, Coetz, Krikorian, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, thirteen members present, and a quorum. Mr. President.
All righty, we have one item before us. We do have cards for that, so we'll go ahead and take card from that first. Arnold Sachs, if you'd like to come forward.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. This federal legislative program that you're, wanna include this resolution on, does that include any programs that would be affected by any of the budget cuts that affect the women? You know, luckily, yesterday, you had a commissioner come in for the Women's Commission--
No, sir, this is H R three oh eight, which is one specific piece of legislation on the size of magazine clips for guns. That's all it's about.
The item mentions the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve federal legislative program.
Yes, to include in that one specific piece of legislation. That's all this is about today.
It's not about the federal legislation program, then?
No, it's about one item in support of one particular bill in the federal government. So if you'd like to give your comments on that particular piece, it doesn't have anything to do with women's legislation, other things to answer your question directly. No, it does not.
Well, that's very narrow-minded, isn't it? I mean, you're just gonna point out one little portion of the federal legislation and exclude everything else in it.
I'm sorry, sir, this isn't a dialogue, but this is, it's a category--
You're having a dialogue--
To add to our overall legislative platform for this year, one piece of support on one particular item. So we'd love to hear your input on that, but if you, but it's not about the overall discussion.
Federal legislation program. I mean, you just brought it up. Your overall support of a federal legislative program, and I'm just concerned-- Excuse me?
All right, thank you, Mr. Sachs. Would you like to say anything on the gun legislation?
I wanted to talk about the federal legislation, yes, I did. But you won't let me talk about the federal legislation program.
All right, so you're out of order. I asked you--
I'm out of order.
You asked if it had anything to do with women's legislation, and I answered you very directly that did not. I hope that that would satisfy you, but you seem to not be satisfied by that, so-- Thank you, sir. If you have nothing to say on this particular piece of legislation, we'll ask you to sit down for your next one. John Walsh is our next speaker, and after that will be Matt Dowd.
John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H I G H L A N D S dot org, Facebooking at Miki Jackson, M I K I Jackson. One hundred percent in favor of this legislation. Give peace a chance. Remember, when you do the right thing up here, I'm your biggest supporter. I'd like to call attention to a bar in Hollywood called Loaded, O L A D E D. They have in their window, and they have a right to do it, but I want you to know, hundreds of spent cartridge cases. This is on Hollywood Boulevard, just west of Vine. It's a glorification of guns, and if you think people with long hair are against guns, you are wrong. The punks, there's a great deal of gun culture in this city, and I hope maybe that Mr. Garcetti would join us in a press conference to protest peacefully the window of that bar. We live in a city where I can get now more, I can go to Arizona and have more firepower than a World War II company, a World War II company of soldiers in one. And it is time for this city council to show the America that we have zero tolerance for-- Let me tell you what this is all about. The reason guys are for guns is because they can't straighten it out themselves, and because they're not man enough to have anything erect in their hands, they use a gun.
Thank you.
I just want you to know, I wasn't stopped--
If you could please avoid anything on sexual--
Not that--
No, sir, I will still point out on this one, too, if you could please avoid sexual or lewd talk. Thank you. Mr. Matt Dowd is our next speaker. And we do have one other card on this that's blank. If somebody else filled one out, let me know, there's no name on it. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, thank you. First of all, under the Brown Act, if it's not a dialogue, that sure looked like a hell of a dialogue there. So let's just do it by the rules, if you're gonna do it by the rules. How about that?
Sir, do you have any comments on, do you have any comments on this today?
Absolutely, yes, indeed. See, this is a knee-jerk reaction to what happened in Arizona with Gabriel Giffords. And that's why these kind of things, but here's why that incident happened out there, because the elected officials just completely rejected that guy when he just wanted to ask a valid question about some political process, but he was rejected out of hand. And you're meant to be representatives. So to me, it's like, oh, yeah, let's get this, 'cause you don't want that to happen to you right now, which I understand, it makes perfect sense. So let me point out, we've been here five years on First Amendment issues at Venice Beach, and that's a constitutional issue just like this one. But have we ever been involved in any incidents at all in any kind that weren't First Amendment-based? No, we're not dangerous. You know, so first of all, let me point that out, we're not these kind of people, but I'm gonna talk about it, 'cause that's a goddamn right in this country to come up here and talk about stuff and not be interrupted.
Sir, would you like to add anything else?
Yes, I see Bill Rosendahl in the Argonaut the other day. There's a big article that's got his face on the front page of the Argonaut. "We Can't Hide," that's the big caption. Am I allowed to draw one of those crosshairs on the front of that?
Our next speaker is Mr. Aguilar.
Yes, my name's Jose Aguilar. You know, just for the record, I own large-capacity magazines. I also work as an armed security officer. I consider myself responsible. I don't understand why city council has a need to try to regulate people like myself who follow the law and who like to have large-capacity magazines. I believe that city council is dealing with platitudes. You are not part of the federal government. You shouldn't be taking stances when it comes to federal issues. I really would ask you to refrain from taking up federal issues like the Second Amendment. Frankly, it's not your business. Second of all, if people have registered guns and they're law-abiding, and they're not committing crimes, or they're not, you know, doing something that is devious, I don't see any need for this so-called resolution for support for large-capacity magazines. You're basically making me feel that I feel like I'm being criminalized here, and frankly, if this federal legislation would take place, I wouldn't be able to wear my, I probably wouldn't be able to go to a gun range with my large-capacity magazines. And I think the fact that I should be able to go to a gun range and use large-capacity magazines is my business, and my business only, and not the city council's business. Thank you very much.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you as well for joining Mr. Coetz and myself and--
Smith.
Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith, who is our chair of our Public Safety Committee on this. We join Chief Charlie Beck, former officers like yourself. I know Mr. Parks has been a supporter of this as well, in simply moving forward to support a specific piece of federal legislation introduced by Representative McCarthy, who is a widow to gun violence on Long Island train, if you remember. She was elected after her husband was killed there, to put back in place what existed in this country from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and four, without anyone having their rights infringed, with the Second Amendment still being very strongly upheld. But when the ban expired in two thousand and four of the Violent Crime Control Law Enforcement Act of nineteen ninety-four, this was not renewed. And large-capacity magazines, more than ten rounds at a time, have been legal to manufacture and sell ever since. Some facts about this. A thirty-three-round magazine was used to carry out the recent shooting spree in Tucson, allowing the gunman to fire off thirty-one bullets in fifteen seconds, killing six and injuring thirteen. Not having large-capacity magazines would not have stopped the shooting, but it could have saved someone's life, and it certainly would have had much less of an impact. In the years following two thousand and four, lethal high-capacity magazines have been used in every mass shooting. Two thousand and seven Virginia Tech shooting, thirty-three dead, fifteen-round magazines, hundreds of shots fired. Two thousand and eight Binghamton, New York shooting, thirteen dead, ninety-nine rounds fired, thirty-round magazine. Two thousand and eight Northern Illinois University, six dead, twenty-one wounded, thirty-three and fifteen-round magazines. Two thousand and nine Fort Hood, thirteen dead, thirty and twenty-round magazines used against our own servicemen. Two thousand and ten Connecticut beer distributor, eight dead, two wounded, high-capacity magazines as well. And we know here in nineteen ninety-seven, L.A. experienced the longest and bloodiest police shootout in U.S. history. in U.S. history, when the North Hollywood attack on Bank of America, shooters loaded with five rifles and approximately thirty-three-hundred rounds of ammunition into a Box &amp; Drum magazine were used. In just the first three weeks of this year, eleven uniformed officers from across the country have fallen victim to gun violence, an eighty-three percent increase in the first two months over 2010 in related fatalities. And just so far in America this year, gun violence is the most common cause of officer fatality, with five-hundred-and-sixty-five gun-related deaths in the last decade. According, I think this is why law enforcement supports this, this is why people who are sensible about gun laws, we want to stop gun violence, not take people's guns away. It's about stopping gun violence. And according to a February third poll conducted by Public Policy Polling, fifty-five percent of Arizona voters think that their own state should have stricter gun laws, compared with thirty-eight percent who disagree. It's incredible to see eighty-one support in other places with only fourteen percent opposition. This is something the American people want, this is something that our community should have, it does not infringe upon Second Amendment rights, you'd still be able to be a very strong and secure security guard, and we want to make sure that folks do have that ability in the Constitution, but there is no enshrined right necessarily, any more than there is to rocket launchers, to have high-capacity magazines, and they have, we're challenged to find any place where they've been used in defense. So we can defend ourselves, there can be guns that people legally have, but the ease with which these high-capacity magazines are obtained and are used in violence is something that we must stand against. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Keretz?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank Councilmember Garcetti for taking the lead on this and working with me on a critical piece of legislation. I know that Congresswoman McCarthy's bill is getting incredible support in Congress. It's gotten over ninety co-authors, many of whom are from California, including in my district, Brad Sherman, Howard Berman, Henry Waxman. And the bill's getting so much support because it's so obviously necessary, and it's so simple. Smaller magazines mean that a shooter has to reload more often. Jared Lothner, the Tucson shooter, was stopped when he had to stop to reload. Congresswoman McCarthy's husband was shot in 1996 in Long Island, and they stopped that shooter when he had to stop to reload. If those people were using ten-bullet magazines instead of fifteen, there's no doubt fewer people would have been hit, fewer people would have been shot, and probably fewer people would have died. This is an important piece of legislation, and I think we send an important message by the second-largest city in the United States supporting this critical piece of legislation, so I ask for your I-vote.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yeah, just a quick comment. When I worked for Robert F. Kennedy, I was there in the Ambassador Hotel when he got shot. Immediately after that, we created an operation process nationwide to deal with limiting guns and people's accessibility to guns. Unfortunately, it took the Brady Bill after he got hurt to actually create federal legislation. I know the National Rifle Association is very strong, and politicians buckle all the time to what these people have to say, but this is something that they should support as well. This just takes it out of the hands of nutcases and takes out the ability to have so many bullets that you can do what happened in Arizona, and we just need to stand up as a great city, a megalopolis on the earth, and say it's time that we took a deep breath and looked at legislation that would be more effective to avoid, again, what just happened in Arizona a little over a month ago. We're all vulnerable in America and throughout the world, as we see the way the world is turning, and if we can get a little more control over the use of firearms, it's a healthy process for us to do. So let's just send a message that we need to move forward on this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I too support this and signed on to this particular matter. I was at the North Hollywood bank shootout, and I saw what happened with the individual, the AK-47s, and how the police were outgunned at that particular situation. And being a member of law enforcement for over four decades, I can tell you that ten rounds in a semi-automatic weapon is more than sufficient to protect yourself and your family, or for a security officer to protect himself and the premises he's protecting. There are magazines and the semi-automatic weapons that go up to thirty rounds, forty rounds, fifty rounds. It really seems foolish in a civilized society that someone would need that many rounds to protect themselves or their family. That's what we're talking about, self-protection. So I believe ten rounds is more than sufficient. If you get a Beretta, or you get any of the other weapons, the law of ten rounds in a magazine is more than sufficient. Used to be the six-shooter, six rounds, then you'd reload, another six rounds, so I believe ten rounds is appropriate, and I strongly support this. And I heard on the news this morning, the third St. Petersburg, Florida, police officer was killed within the last couple of weeks. That's three police officers, St. Petersburg, Florida, that have been killed by guns, by suspects, and we don't need to continue those tragedies. Again, we're not talking about taking away people's guns or their right to carry a weapon, it's their business or their home. We're talking about the capacity of the magazine where they are loading bullets, and ten rounds is more than sufficient to protect you and your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Thank you, members, and Mr. Zine, thank you. You know, from your experience as a police officer, so I appreciate your comments and support of this. Mr. Garcetti, thank you for your leadership in this, as well as the comments from my colleagues. And I'm looking at Richard Alicon, and I know that day was a very horrific day in your district when that tragedy happened in North Hollywood. So this is very important, so I stand to support this. Thank you.
Mr. Alicon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Zine and Mr. Labange. I also, I was present at the bank robbery in my district, and I distinctly remember having to be very careful where you walked for several blocks, because you might step on shell casings that were evidence, and they were all over, hundreds and hundreds of rounds were fired, and people were severely injured, and fortunately, nobody died. And I don't know how nobody died. There's no reason for this kind of weaponry for personal protection. This, and, and, and just to reiterate the point, not only can this happen here, it did happen here at the North Hollywood shootout, and while we changed several laws at all levels in the aftermath of that bank robbery and shootout, there's always more work to do, because violent criminals will figure out new ways and new devices and crazier ways to kill people. And so this is something that is necessary, bought on by the obvious considerations relative to the shooting in Arizona. But for me, it was just a reminder that we should have done more after the North Hollywood shootout, but we take it as it comes. So we applaud this legislation, and hopefully, Congress will pass it.
Thank you. Mr. Kardnis.
Thank you very much. I think that it's important for people to know that this legislation does not take away a person's right to bear arms. It has to do with the kind of arms that people carry, and it specifically speaks to devices that carry more than ten rounds. And one of the main reasons why people make the argument that they have these weapons, for example, that were used in the Bank of America shootout in North Hollywood, is that, you know, well, I'd like to use them for hunting, but this particular legislation talks about devices that don't have more than ten rounds. With all due respect, if you're out there hunting a deer, and if you can't hit that thing within ten rounds, let it go, the deer won. Maybe, maybe it's more dangerous that you're spraying out that kind of, you know, bullets all over the place, and you're really not hitting your target, so the bottom line is, again, this is not an attack on people's right to bear arms. It really has to do with making sure that we respect the Constitution, and at the same time, look at what's happening today, look at what should be taking place, and making sure that we have legislation that still allows people the right to bear arms, but also be responsible as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kardnis. Go ahead and prepare the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen i's.
Thank you. That is approved, we'll send that forthwith. Hope we can go back to the regular meeting now, and we will call, go to the public comment and then go through the other. A Councilmember, would you like to adjourn the special meeting? Sorry, yeah, that's what I mean, adjourn, adjourn to go to the regular meeting. We now will go to our general public comment. Our first speaker is Dr. Clyde Williams.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 40115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Yesterday, we had a meeting with the MTA. Oh, they're having conversations with the communities. That is, the city of L.A. gets three meetings, one of which will be on record regarding the proposed seven-ten north extension tunnel, or as some people like to say, the seven-ten gap closure. The only thing that we find a gap is between people's ears. There's a problem for Northeast LA. The study area for the seven-ten north extension is approximately a couple hundred square miles. However, we all know that there are really only two alignments. Even Gloria Molina drew it on the piece of paper in MTA board meeting, but that wasn't part of record. We know it's coming. Caltrans and MTA are trying to exhaust the opposition and/or snow the public. The seven-ten gap closure north extension is a boondoggle. It's billions, billions of dollars, not just one, not just five, probably about ten, ten, twelve billion. They are trying to relieve L.A. of attendance at any of the meetings by restricting the on-record to one meeting for all of Northeast LA. We'd like to have the City of Los Angeles Department of Transportation or Board of Public Works request additional meetings in Northeast LA to truly reflect the community's public participation in the scoping process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your activism continuing on that item. Walter Bechtel is our next speaker. After that will be David Kirsch.
Good morning. I wanted to say something about our representatives supposedly representing what the people want, and especially Measure R. It seems strange to me that the mayor and several of our representatives continue to cite Measure R this, Measure R that, and that the people voted in Measure R. But on one hand, but on the other hand, the people voted against legalization of marijuana and other legislation that came before the state and even the federal government. For some reason, those laws, the city council and the mayor doesn't feel inclined to uphold. What are you representing? Are you representing us, or are you representing some interests that we're not aware of? It seems obvious to me that Measure R doesn't have anything to do with anything at all. Your own agenda is what's all, and what you're considering. You don't care less about the people of this city at all. You supposedly care about housing, and you're making deals with CRA, et cetera, but you fail to, to remember that the people are making less and less money every year as each year goes by, and we're getting cut here and there, and for some reason, your redevelopment agency sees fit to remove us from our properties, not guarantee our rent, and when we are allowed to move back, if we are allowed, our rent has doubled or tripled. How does that help the people? It doesn't help us at all. It helps your own agenda and the people that you hired to make our properties look bad.
Thank you, sir. David Kirsch is our next speaker. Arnold Sachs will follow.
Good morning. My name is David Kirsch. I'm here on behalf of the Carpenters Contractors Cooperation Committee, which is comprised of the sixty-five thousand members of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters and the Signatory Union Contractors. I am here to urge you to make the Lincoln Place project move forward and help secure the final funding for this project. The over a hundred million dollar investment that will be spent to renovate the project will create six-hundred to seven-hundred quality jobs with good wages and benefits. As you may know.
My apologies, Mr. Kirsch. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Our general public comment, we can't speak about things that are on the agenda, but that item is on the agenda, and agenda is for public comment, so if you don't mind, we'll bring you up on item number twenty-six, I think it is, where we're talking about Lincoln Place. Is that okay?
Can I just finish, or?
Technically, under the state law, we have to, we can't, it's for items that are not on the agenda, and that is on the agenda. So I will take it up first, but if you, we can just get through general public comment first, we have to legally do that, unfortunately.
Okay. Well, we brought our folks down here to show our support. Thanks.
Okay, no, thank you, appreciate it. And just hang out, and I know there's other folks here from the building trades. I'm going to put twenty-six on those cards instead of general public comment. Mr. Sax is our next speaker. Sorry, twenty-five, not twenty-six.
Thank you. Good morning. How interesting, Mr. President. Can't speak on items that are on the agenda during public comment, but MTA is holding hearings on service reductions. On the agenda, service reduction presentations, public comment only allowed on the service cuts. It's on the agenda. You say state law doesn't allow it. MTA says state law does allow it. What a conundrum. Where are we on that, Mr. President? Maybe you should go to an MTA board meeting that involves service reductions and clarify that for them, or maybe the city attorney. And another item regarding the city attorney. Yesterday, Mr. Alicon had a light item on his, on the agenda, the determination of public convenience or necessity for off-site consumption at Roja Investments Incorporated a convenience market. Sat here and listened to it. Item on the agenda, in the agenda package says deny the res, deny the request. Pass twelve oh. Yet now we find out it wasn't to deny, because Mr. Alicon got up and said, "I'm asking for an I-vote," because this is a market that helps people on WIC. So you voted yes. The item on the agenda says deny, which would mean you're denying the request. The city attorney didn't say anything, by the way, if you vote yes, you're denying it. Now we find out there were verbal amendments. Nothing in writing, verbally done. What does that mean? Where's open and transparent? If you vote and the public gets an item on the agenda that says deny, and you say one thing that's different from what's on the agenda, what's open and transparent about that, Mr. President? Where's the city attorney? How come he didn't clarify? Maybe he was out getting water.
Thank you.
Can you clarify?
Mr. John Walsh is our next speaker. Mr. Alicon, obviously, that was done in an open meeting that was on television and before the public, but Mr. Alicon, would you like to further clarify?
I just want to clarify that it was a simple verbal amendment to the report. In passing it, it included numerous conditions that the police department had requested to if the liquor permit were authorized. I do think it's necessary to say that there were hundreds and hundreds of signatures by the local community around the market, otherwise I would have not supported the project. Thank you.
Thank you. John Walsh, our next speaker. After that is, Mr. City Attorney, did you want to add anything?
Just to clarify and follow up on what Mr. Alicon said, the agenda description yesterday was appropriately described so that an interested member of the public could determine whether to participate in the meeting.
Thank you. John Walsh, our next speaker, then Jose Aguilar.
John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org. We just put a new post up today, our endorsements are up there, wrote for Stephen Box, Rudy Martinez, and for city council, and Deborah Bowen. This is the fifth continuance. This is the Guinness Book of Records on the nine-hundred-and-thirty-million-dollar big steal. Five times we've come down here. Redevelopment.com to find out the true story of redevelopment. Redevelopment.com. Incidentally, I've heard from several people, these cushions here have lice in them. People are getting head lice. Please clean the cushions. Incidentally, there's a first year here, in Mr. Reyes' district, they have scheduled a monster rave like no other rave in the history of America. They're handing out flyers on Hollywood Boulevard. It will be August in the cornfields, so they can introduce narcotics to the young It will be August in the cornfields so they can introduce narcotics to the young Hispanics in Mr. Reyes' district, the white people who sell the narcotics to the people in Mr. Reyes' district, the children in his district. You have, nothing in writing on what? The CRA has withdrawn supportive services, de-recognized the Adelante PAC. This is a violation of law. Just as we hired a lawyer, we're asking Dennis Winston to take this case. Nothing in writing. They show up at the meeting, nothing was there, they held a meeting in any case. What is happening? You don't know they did it? It's not on their website. HollywoodHighlands.com. I'm telling you right now, this city is falling apart. We are Christchurch. What happened to Christchurch literally is happening figuratively in this city. HollywoodHighlands.org, Facebook, Mickey Jackson, M-I-K-I.
Thank you, Jose Aguilar. Is next after that is Mike Colker.
Yeah, my name is Jose Aguilar. You know, I came to you previously, and I complained that David Roca Tello, the regional administrator of the CRA LA, has pulled supportive services away from the East Side Project Area Committee. He is no longer providing translation services. He is no longer providing agendas, distribution under the Brown Act. He is no longer printing the agendas. He's no longer posting the agendas. He's no longer recording the minutes, and they refuse to put the Project Area Committee agenda items on their own website. This is done, and the reason I have to include my elected representatives of Mr. Weezer and Mr. Ed Reyes, because they knew about this previously. The meeting was held and took place, and everything that I mentioned was not there. This was done in direct retaliation because the city council, because the city council and the CRA did not like the fact that the Project Area Committee voted for support of Mr. Jerry Brown's elimination of the CRA and having that money redirect back to our local communities. There's also a newspaper article that was published at La Opinión dating 2/17/11 that has Dan, oh, what's his name? Anyhow, has a board member of the CRA stating for the record that we were mistaken, that we had a misunderstanding, and that the CRA was providing supportive services. This was published in La Opinión, that they did not pull away services. Well, you know what? You have bureaucrats that are compulsive liars, and Weezer and Reyes is enabling them. So it'll be out in public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar. Mike Colker is next. After that is Matt Dowd.
I'd like to have my comments postponed until Mr. Reyes and, of course, Mr. Weezer, as already is here, are both of the listeners.
Mr. Dowd? Mr. Dowd, would you like to come forward?
Yeah, I'm here.
Come on. It's your turn.
Thank you. Okay, speaking of Richard Alacon, first of all, I hear it's not the only robbery he was present at. The Children's Hospital springs to mind, those loans. If you read the blogs about this, around the city of LA right now, you'll find that the city is firing everybody. There's no fire and police, the academy, everyone's losing their jobs, and here's why. It's because the mayor and Henry Sisneros has hired affordable workforce housing, or Gloria Molina and a bunch of you involved in this pension fraud. And you lost all the pension money. You let, you approved the mayor's commissioners, and they had, they had their fixes in on the pension board, and they allocated all that money to all the shady things with AEG and downtown Los Angeles investment, Morello Maddox, who have finished. It's as shady as it gets, and I hope people investigate the pension fraud that cost the city of Los Angeles everything. Now I want to talk about the rules of decorum, the city attorney. See, White versus Norwalk, those guys lost. The rules did not win these things here. So let me talk about the performance of the city council and the city attorney in particular. It is the performance of a water boy. But it's not just a water boy, it's a water boy on a losing team. Tom LeBonge will tell you what that means. You know, I'm pissed because I have to come here, and please, someone get negotiating on our federal First Amendment victory. We won a preliminary injunction against the city, and Bernie Parks is talking about me in his, in his committee to get 6344 back. But that's a big mistake because that's in the Ninth Circuit. But Tom LeBonge is running a committee here yesterday without a quorum, continuing items, and breaking all the rules.
Our next speaker is Rick Nightingale in Van Nuys. Good morning, sir.
Yeah, Rick Nightingale. I had a card in for that ammo, but I, it didn't get through. But I'll tell you, you guys are stepping on so many toes, and you have so much other responsibility to do. Same as when Paul Krecht and you, Mr. Garcia, talked about the ammo about Hollow Point. You didn't know what you were talking about then. But you, but yeah, a lot of ammo, but you're talking about all these killings and so forth. We've got 4 million people here, and you go percentage-wise and so forth. I feel sorry for all the families that got hurt and so forth, but you just keep, you're like a little munchkin, you keep digging, digging, digging on our constitutional rights. But that's just one of the things. But what I'm getting at here is that the election coming up, you people have to vote. You have to vote and get some of these people out of there. I'm telling you. You see what's happening in Wisconsin? It's all about the pensions and so forth, that these people are all in bed with the unions, and look what the unions of money that they're putting up. I'm telling you, you have to get them out because the unions have taken over. I was a member of the IBW, but the thing is, we got paid from the outside people and so forth. It didn't have anything to do with the city. Can you imagine what the whole situation is? The government or any part of the city, you get by a percentage. The outside world is by a dollar sign when you sign it. People don't think, it's the magic number is 6%. And every time that they want something that's 6%, do you know how much 6% of $50,000 is $30,000, is $3,000? So every three years, they're getting $3,000, and that's why this place is bankrupt. And so is the state, because it's on a percentage. You say, "Oh, well, the little people don't get much." Yeah, but the higher people get all. You people have to turn around. You'd have no business going percentage, but they do. You have to get these people out, and we have to fix this thing, or else this place is not going to live to see the next day because they're going to be bankrupt.
Thank you, Linda Bybee is our next speaker. Excuse me if I mispronounce that. Is it Bybee or? Okay. And then after that will be Richard Robinson. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning. I'm Linda Bybee, DEO of Regional Communications for Metro. Thank you, Mr. President and council members. I am here today to advise you of the commencement of outreach meetings that we are conducting in relation to, as Dr. Williams said, SR 710, and we have been pleased to have Dr. Williams attend all of our meetings. We are having the first one in the city of Los Angeles this Thursday at, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Los Angeles Christian Presbyterian Church. We are having 18 meetings in total. The first 12 meetings are outreach into the communities that are most directly affected by this study, and that is preparatory to the last six meetings, which will be scoping meetings. We have titled these meetings, one, transportation, where we've been, where we're going. The second series of meetings is sequo nepa, protecting communities, and that will be a study guide in preparing communities to have significant and meaningful input into the scoping meetings, which will be in the last series of meetings. We will be returning to the same location on March 17th, and the final meeting in, at the church will be on March 29th, and that will be the scoping meeting. We are also, at the meeting this Thursday, we'll be having a webcast of that meeting, and we are conducting a virtual meeting on March 21st so that people may participate in the scoping. It's a virtual scoping meeting, and that will remain open until the end of scoping, and that will be April 14th. So I want to thank you very much. I do have copies of the meeting notices. The meeting, I do have copies if you would like them. Thank you.
Thank you. If we have copies, we'll make sure that that gets distributed in our districts as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for giving us that information. The Sergeant Arms can take that from you. Richard Robinson is our next speaker. After that is Noel Weiss.
Good morning, sir.
Mr. President, members, about a quarter of a century ago, in 1985, through the chair, I walked into Mr. Tom LeBonge's district's Christian Science Church, quarter of a century ago. I had no idea, I had no idea what Christian Science is. Over the years, I come to find out it's my stepmother's church. Now, I'm here, sir, to ask of you a favor. The charlatan who calls himself a first reader in my stepmother's church, Mrs. Eddie's church, has ruined the congregation. There is no congregation. Why? Because he's a charlatan. He's not a first reader. My stepmother knows that. Now, what I'd like, and I respectfully request that the parking, about 20, 20 years ago, I asked Danny Garcia, at that time, the president. Danny, as the head of the Public Works Department, he gave Lyle Wagner permission to use the parking lot. Now, I'm asking that you, which allows the church to stay open. So I'm asking for your help. Get the idiot out of my church. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Noel Weiss is next. After that, Mr. Colker.
We got a quorum. Very good. Morning, council. Morning, public. Middle class under attack. I don't think anybody votes for, I don't think any of you ran for council saying, "Elect me, I'm going to screw things up." But for some reason, when you get in here, somehow or other, we get a divergence of destinies here between what's possible and what ends up happening. I want to again thank this city council, and Bill Rosendahl, and Janice Hahn for releasing the agreement between the city and the city attorney in Lincoln Place, because AMCO had no problem with it, Bill Rosendahl had no problem with it, the mayor had no problem with it. The only person who had a problem with it was our so-called city attorney. When I say so-called, I mean, he ran as the attorney for the people, and he is now, in effect, running that office, anything but, as far as I'm concerned. And that makes him worse than Rocky II. Fraud, waste, and abuse. Ladies and gentlemen of the city council, again, supposedly, I hear in these campaigns, experience counts. Elect me, I'm so experienced. Well, you know what? If you're so experienced, why can't we hear the three words? In a $6 billion budget, are you telling me that there is not any fraud, waste, and abuse? Why can't we get a discussion before the city council on that issue? Why can't we? Because if we do, it will basically get into the question of the city attorney's role again as a problem in this whole situation. Why? How can you possibly negotiate with the pension plans when the city attorney, and you're going to have to do it next year, they're on both sides. They represent the pension plans, and they represent you. We got proprietary departments, the CRA. He represents the CRA, he represents you. How can you possibly get decent legal representation in that situation? How can the other side, how can the people get the decent representation? We need the council. Honestly, if experience counts, then start doing, respectfully, start stepping up. Most of the time, reactive politics works fine. This is not that time. We are under attack. We've got to have you more proactive and get the people involved, get the people involved in the debate, and hopefully we'll move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Colker. After that is Antonio Ramirez.
Hi, my name's Mike Colker. I'm an elected member of the CRA's Adelante East Side Project Area Committee. I spoke to you a week ago about how the CRA retaliated against our PAC for voting unanimously in support of Governor Brown's proposal to eliminate CRAs in the state, including our own. I want to thank Mr. Reyes, Councilman Reyes. He was kind enough, I understand, to try to speak to the CRA to get them to do the right thing. Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Unfortunately, the CRA didn't respond. That's why before you today, I'm about to propose a motion for you folks to pass. Let me read the motion. Proposed motion for city council restoring the CRA's elected Adelante East Side Project Area Committee. The city council of the city of Los Angeles hereby directs the Community Redevelopment Agency of the city of Los Angeles to restore the CRA's Adelante East Side Project Area Committee and overrule the actions of CRA Regional Administrator David Ricciello, where he withheld critical services from the elected PAC and attempted to block the elected members of the PAC and its executive board for meeting. Furthermore, the council requires Mr. Ricciello and the CRA to restore all services previously supplied to that elected PAC, including but not limited to Spanish-language translation services for agendas, meetings, and minutes, recording of the PAC meetings, creating and posting bilingual agendas in 16 locations throughout the district, calling executive board and PAC meetings as required by the PAC bylaws, creating legally required minutes to the meetings, posting the PAC agenda on the CRA website, which they refuse to do right now, posting the minutes of the PAC on the CRA website, which hasn't been posted since June 2010, CRA personnel attending CRA PAC meetings. Furthermore, the city council directs the CRA and Mr. Ricciello not to take any such actions against this CRA PAC in the future without city council approval. I'd like to pass out copies of this to the, to the members here. Furthermore, I'd like to ask the city attorney to immediately supply independent counsel to the PAC, because the city attorney has a conflict of interest in representing the Community Redevelopment Agency and the PAC. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Colin. Just for a moment, Colker, my understanding is that Mr. Ricciello will be reinstating the translation, Mr. Ricciello will be reinstating the translation services. They say they're going to. I'm just letting you know that that's what they said, and also, they will not be, how to put this, they're looking into making sure you can still use the library space as you used to before. So that was their verbal commitment to me.
They just blocked us from using the police station across the street from me.
Sorry, we can't go back and forth. I think it was just a point of information, and we'll continue to follow that, and we appreciate your comments very much. Antonio Ramirez is our next speaker. After that is Mr. Ben Fortson. Good morning.
Good morning. I, I just want to thank Officer Duarte for doing a fine job, and I also vote and will vote for President Gil Garcetti because he does have a lot of class. The developing world, Latin America has pushed their uncivilized, uncouth, and unrefined population here into the United States, creating a chronic urban blight and a human dignity plight. The traffic congestion's causing grave gridlocks, never mind if they are reckless drivers who drive unsafe vehicles and who more often flee the seas of crimes. Moreover, these criminal illegals, aliens, Hong Kong, Hong Kong their vehicles night and day with reckless disregard to human dignity, and or they will shout, "Tamales, tamales, tamales," night and day. God forbid you ask them to stop. They'll kill you or shove AK up your, you know what. The operative word is "ask." They have no values, no morals, no standards of conduct, no courtesy, and no human dignity. But I forget, all law-abiding citizens in America are treated like second-class citizens. That includes me, a Mexicana, law-abiding. And the wetbacks have first-class citizen status here. After all, they are extremely toxic, and you can't change these people. Why? It's in their blood. You can't change them. And so I say deport the, you know what, the bastards, and get rid of the noise and all the gridlocks and all the noise pollution will cease and desist. And again, do the right thing. Do the right thing. Deport these wetbacks. I am a Mexican. I have followed the letter of a law. I make no bones about it. I am polite, but I can also trash anybody who tries to trash me. It's very simple. I love life, and God, life is good. Thank you, Gil Garcetti. Gil Garcetti, Eric Garcetti. I love you. You guys are wonderful. Thank you very much for doing a great job. Officer Duarte, you are fantastic. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr., yeah, Mr.-
Mr. President, I'm sure the public is-
Mr. President, I—I'm sure the public is—is very disturbed to hear some of the terms that were used by that previous speaker. Can you explain how limited we are in being able to shield them from hearing that kind of garbage?
The Supreme Court has opined, and the city attorney can probably give it more, but the only speech which is—this is—while this is not a complete free speech arena, it is a limited free speech arena. The only speech that outright in these public forums can be banned is of a sexual nature. If it is of racial—as we've had racial epithets, people have worn here, have said here—that is protected under the First Amendment. We can decry it. We can say that we strongly speak out against those sorts of terms and things like that, but we cannot stop it in a public forum. So that is what our First Amendment has been interpreted. Mr. City Attorney, anything else you'd like to add?
Yes. The Ninth Circuit case law has had a line of cases that determine whether the actions in council were a disruption to the meeting.
Correct. If something becomes—a—if something disrupts the meeting, and the impact of that is disruptive, that is a different matter. But if folks are calmly listening to it, even if it's offensive language, that is protected as long as it's not of a of a sexual nature. Mr. Ben Fortson, thank you for your patience. You are the next speaker, and Ms. Eleanor Harrison will follow.
On Friday, February eleventh, my fiancee and I became the victims of a racially motivated criminal threat and a racially motivated assault with a deadly weapon, a shotgun, a hate crime, by a man who decided to celebrate Black History Month by targeting and victimizing two black people—or, in his words, "two"—in our N-words. We have reason to believe that he has connections and ties with the LAPD Southwest Division, clear up to the city council, Mr. Weston, I believe. We also believe he is being shown favoritism because the report is not accurate, and we believe a cover-up is taking place. When one is victimized—victimizing another and using vulgar, hostile, and contemptuous racial slurs, when used in this manner, is a fundamental determination of what defines a hate crime. It is as if certain people in this society are granted immunity from hate crime prosecution when it comes to declarative racially motivated attacks against—towards black people. And we also believe the reason this is—because the message—this United States of America has refused to reconcile the genocide, the torment that it has sent us through, through slavery, and the rest of the time, things that has been done to us, and that sends a fundamental message to people that it's okay to target and victimize black people. There can be no reconciliation—slavery has never been reconciled in this country. There can be no reconciliation without atonement. And that sends a direct message to the whole country, it's okay to target and victimize these people, because we really don't care about these people. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ms. Eleanor Harrison. After that is Van Nuys and Mike Greenspan.
Good morning, city council.
Good morning.
May I have your favorable attention? On Friday, February eleventh, two thousand and ten, my fiancee and I became the victims of a racially motivated criminal threat and a racially motivated assault with a deadly weapon. The guy pulled a shotgun out on us. A hate crime that a man—by a man who decided to celebrate Black History Month by targeting and victimizing us, or in his words, he called us the N-word, N-I-G-G-E-R, several times. We have reason to believe that he has connection and ties with the LAPD, the Southwest Division, clear up to the city council. We also believe he is being shown favoritism, because the report is not accurate. When we went down there to make sure that they had our statements, they had it all botched up. And we also believe a cover-up is taking place. This is two thousand and eleven. It seems hate crime protection law doesn't apply to black people. It's as if certain people in this society are granted immunity from hate crime prosecution when it comes to racially motivated attacks against black people. When one is victimizing another and using vulgar, hostile, and contemptuous racial slurs, when used in this manner, it is a fundamental determination of what defines a hate crime. I ask you, city council, what is your definition of a hate crime? We ask Mr. Bernard Parks and Mr. Thomas Reilly for assistance and help. We need it desperately, and we need it today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our last speaker for our general public comment is Mike Greenspan, and then we'll go to comment cards on individual items, and Mr. Greenspan is in Van Nuys. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Last time I spoke in front of the city council was on July thirteenth. It was about the parcel tax for libraries, and everybody gave these wonderful speeches, wonderful speeches about opening our libraries on Saturday, and that we needed the parcel tax. Well, now, we're in the next fiscal year, and guess what? We haven't passed the parcel tax, which we didn't need to begin with, and libraries are still open on Saturday. Oh, I saw those demonstrations. Shut our islands, not libraries. Well, the libraries are open. We just have to have a budget, and we have to keep things within budget. So you have to close it a couple days of the week in order to meet those high extravagant union salaries, benefits, everything else. But you guys did a great job on the city council. I guess you can say you had a Sarah Palin moment. You could talk—a good talk, but factually inaccurate. Hey, any of us know Sarah Palin's not that bright, and I'm sorry the city council lowered theirself to that level. All of us gators could beat her on an SAT test any day of the week, even under the influence of Rush Limbaugh's OxyContin's, if we have to. But let me tell you, the libraries are still open. One day, I was driving around the valley. I figured I'd go to lunch, and there was this restaurant that had a beautiful view of a golf course, and named Billingsley's. And I drove over there in Van Nuys, and guess what? It was closed. It's shuttered. But it won't open up on a Tuesday. All the libraries will, but Billingsley's won't. Must be city regulations, something about a living wage ordinance that drove them out of business. The other Billingsley's is open, the one over there in West LA, where they haven't been regulated, out of business. And for the people upset about the retaliation of the CRA, remember, Mezreal comes up on the ballot this time. Vote against the feather-betting of three hundred union jobs.
We'll close our general public comment. We'll go to item twenty-five, and David Kirsch, thank you for your patience. You've got a full two minutes to start again. After that, we'll hear from Kevin Bass.
Thank you. Again, good morning. David Kirsch with the Carpenter's Contractors Cooperation Committee. I am here to urge you to make Lincoln Place—the Lincoln Place Project—move forward and to help secure the final funding for this project. The over a hundred million dollar investment that will be spent to renovate the project will create six hundred to seven hundred quality jobs with good wages and benefits. As you may know, the construction industry is facing high unemployment rates, up to forty percent in some of the trades, and with limited opportunities for job growth, it is imperative that we look for ways to stimulate the economy and generate jobs while at the same time we promote vibrant communities. There are options available that will not impact the general fund, and we urge you to take action and make this project a reality. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kirsch. Kevin Bass is our next speaker. After that is Ron Miller.
Hello, council members. My name is Kevin Bass with the International Union of Painters and Allied Trades. I'm the government affairs representative. I'm here to speak on the Lincoln Place Project that is being stalled over funding. I've spoken before you on behalf of my union on numerous occasions, and this is the first time that I've been able to speak on a project that is truly shovel-ready. We can break ground on this project in three months. This project will put back to work between six to eight hundred of my construction brothers and sisters. And within my union, I represent eleven thousand workers in this area, and thirty-five to forty percent of them are not working. So please move this forward so I can get some of these people back to work. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ron Miller. Our L.A. Building Trades is next. After that is Doug Murray.
Good morning. Council members. I'm Ron Miller. I'm with the L.A. Orange County Building Construction Trades. Building Trades represents one hundred and forty thousand members, craftsmen and women across the two counties. Currently, we have about forty percent unemployment across the trades, and I'm here to speak on this Lincoln—Lincoln Place Project. Just like you've heard, it's going to put six to eight hundred people back to work, good-paying, middle-class jobs. And we've got a commitment from the owner. It's going to start in May, if you can get the additional funding. I'm imploring you to put your collective heads together and come up a way—come up with a way to get this thing funded, so we can get people back to work, paying taxes and generating revenue for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Doug Murray is the next. After that is Fred Montoya.
Good morning. Council members. My name's Doug Murray. I'm with Plumbers Local Seventy-eight of Los Angeles. You've heard it, my brothers before me are speaking on the Lincoln Place I'm here to do as well. I have about forty percent unemployment in our local union, which is downtown here in Los Angeles. Forty percent—forty to forty-five percent of my apprentices are out of work as well. Many of them local hires that are brought in from a lot of the PLA projects that we've had. Basically, I'm here just—to give my support for this project, for our members, and—and hope that the council can—can work with the developers here and get this going. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fred Montoya is next. After Mr. Montoya is Patty Schweder.
Good morning. Good morning to all. My name is Fred Montoya. I represent the heat frosting slayers here in Southern California. Just like the people who've come before you here about this Lincoln Place Project, I also—my locals also experience a very high unemployment, and it's been a prolonged session, period of unemployment for all of us. It's very easy, my members think, just like your constituents think, that we all have a job. We all have income, and they don't. I just want to reiterate what our mayor says: Jobs, jobs, jobs. My members are asking us, "Jobs, jobs, jobs." We've had many opportunities to get projects going. This project here, there's not a whole lot holding it up. I would ask, like the others, that we all put our heads together here and give our members, our brothers and sisters, who have lost homes, lost cars, lost health and welfare because they have no employment, let's give them the opportunity to go to work, and again, jobs, jobs, jobs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montoya. Patty Schweder is next. After Ms. Schweder will be Cindy Starett.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Patty Schweder, Senior Vice President of Aimco. We see today that Lincoln Place is on the agenda in a closed session, and I flew in from DC to be here. I wish it was an open session, but wanted to update you very quickly on where we are. We are moving quickly on this project. We have really appreciated your leadership in helping us get funding from the Housing Department. The settlement agreement requires nine million dollar commitment in city funds, not general funds, and we really hope that you will work with us to urge DWP and others to get us over the finish line. We're moving very fast. We've gotten environmental clearments. We've got building permits open, and we're—we're ready to go, but need just a little help to get over the finish line, so we'll be here if anybody has any questions today.
Thank you. Cindy Starett is next. Noel Weiss will follow.
Good morning, council members. Cindy Starett on behalf of Aimco. And I just wanted to reiterate how hard Aimco is working and how appreciative we are of the council's action in May of two thousand and ten to adopt a historic settlement agreement that would end twenty years of litigation, allow up to eighty-three prior residents to return to Lincoln Place, and reoccupy over seven hundred housing units that are still vacant in Venice. Councilmember Rosendahl is a leader on this project. We had over two hundred tenants sign a settlement agreement, and we are now trying to move forward to file our loan application to HUD. This will be the largest loan in the United States for a multifamily, historic, sustainable project, and it will be in Los Angeles. It's an over a hundred million dollar loan. It cannot happen unless the gap closure that was part of that settlement agreement, the nine million dollars for the public-private partnership, is committed to make that loan viable. We have an agreement with the construction trades. Over six hundred green jobs can start on this project this summer if we can get that commitment so we can go forward. It's a three-year construction period. It will take some time. We understand dollars are tight, but we also believe that the council gave policy direction to DWP, that the council wanted energy efficiency, water conservation projects, to be able to get assistance in infrastructure. We have worked for nine months with DWP. We know that they've had many changes during that period of time, but we ask the council to reaffirm that policy direction so this project can go forward. We're very appreciative of our work with the Housing Department, and the council gave that policy direction that affordable housing projects that were mixed income could have an affordable component as well as a market component, and we're eligible for those funds. We ask you to make this project happen, give that direction so Lincoln Place can go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Noel Weiss is next. After that is George Milstein.
Thank you. Members of the council, we got sixty-five people who renegotiated a right to return for, okay? Those people have been out now—well, you all know the Lincoln Place SOG, and we have, by the way, time to acknowledge the Lincoln Place five: Janice Hahn, Tony Cardenas, Greg Smith, Bill Rosendahl, and I forget the fifth one. As of—oh, Jose Uizar, of course. How can I forget? In any event, here's the thing. The—the problem in this entire situation has been the city attorney. We would have been at—everything that has been screwed up in this case—and every case, by the way, has a personality. Personality of this case has been screwed up from the—by the city attorney from day one. There is no reason—I underline the word "no"—reason why this has to be in closed session. I think it's important for the council—this is a time for those who are for openness and transparency—to stand up for the people, for citizen empowerment, and say, "You know what? We're not going to hide behind closed doors." I don't know what special interest is being protected here by the city attorney, other than his own, but honestly, we need basically to stop. In terms of an alternative, again, what I want to press for is an eight—what I call AB eight-eleven alternative. They're trying to work with the DWP. It's beyond the realm of possibility. Austin Butner's pretty much shut the door. The mayor's pretty much shut the door. I don't know what happened to public-private partnerships when it comes to the people, the middle class of the city, and why we can't basically get something done. We can get something done for Wall Street. We can get something done for the rich in this city, but when it comes to the middle class, it's not happening. The DWP's a problem, and the city attorney's a problem. Again, we're back to the conflict of interest between the city attorney representing the DWP and the city attorney representing the city council. It is a problem. Please open up that session. AB eight-eleven. All Bill Rosendahl has to do is introduce a motion, and basically, we can get zero percent financing for the solar. Likewise, four-seventy-four. It's a very citizen-empowering idea. Please, city council, please, Bill Rosendahl, let—if—if we can begin to move forward on that alternative, I think we can basically make this progress and process move. Again, finally, please, whatever it takes, make it happen for the people. Thank you.
Thank you. George Milstein is our next speaker. After that is Arnold Sacks.
Audible Councilmember is George Milstein. I will try to be brief. Essentially, we have a great opportunity today and in the next several months to create jobs and create housing. Simply put, we have two requests to you today. Number one, we request that you provide the greatest possible assurance through the Department of Water Power that they will be able to provide funding for this project. That is critical. As we move forward in the HUD funding process, that commitment is instrumental to getting this HUD loan, so that we can put workers back to work and make this project habitable in a very short term. Secondly, we would ask you to direct the Department of Water and Power to work with us to identify opportunities over the next year or two to find additional funding for conservation and energy efficiency. We appreciate your help on this matter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Arnold Sacks is our last speaker on twenty-five.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. Just curiously, will this project include project labor agreements? I never heard anybody discuss that. Has this got CRA funding involved with it? Does that— Does that mean there will be a CRA living wage ordinance involved? Didn't hear anybody discuss that. There's permits been opened, I heard somebody speak about. Anything vetted as à la AEG's project with the Regal Cinema? You know, those permits were vetted. They weren't included in the project originally, but they got the ability to put the permits and put the theater together without getting the actual permits they needed. So I'm just wondering, nobody mentioned anything about vetting any permits. Is that a hidden agenda? And there was mention of $9 million, but none of it in general funds. So where would that money be coming from? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. We are going to be taking that up in closed session, but if we can go to item one, we have one, sorry, two public comment cards. Matt Dowd is our first speaker. And then, Mr. Sacks, you'll follow.
Yes, thank you. Quick comment on the Department of Building Safety lien, of course, on a property, $6,500. That's what they do, folks, so keep all your properties in order and tidy because they come up with all these municipal codes, and then they send all the inspectors out there, and you've got to pay for the inspections, and they find any little thing, and then they put a lien on the property, and the next thing you know, you owe the city thousands of dollars. So as a public safety and awareness message, let me tell you, the city is out to get you. I have personal experience of this, sending undercover officers down on me selling CDs. They had tried to send them down on me the other day in Venice Beach. They're just out to trap you, get the revenue, because the mayor and the city council let the pension commissioners run off with all the pension money, and now they are a bunch of money, and there's no money in the general fund.
If you could bring it back to the line. Thank you. Mr. Sacks is our next speaker.
Yes, thank you, Arnold Sacks. Yeah, maybe this is an opportunity to save some money in a city's budget. The Department of Building and Safety, who needs them? Again, as I reiterate, when AEG project came before this council for their signage at the Regal Theater, the only permits needed for Regal through Cinemas to open for its premiere are building permits that were never issued but vetted. So if you can vet the work that's required by the Building and Safety, why not just eliminate the department? Let's put the work right here in the hands of the city council. We know you're able and capable, but that's an open-ended question right there. So again, I say, who cares about the Building and Safety? Vet the projects, let it go, don't let it go, line your pockets, and we'll just move on. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn, did you want to say something briefly on one?
Colleagues, I just want you to know that on item one, I don't know if you remember, but last week, this was a Building and Safety, and a lien against a property, and if you recall, the owners came, and we gave them one more week to try to resolve the issues. We also took, we deleted some interest payments that they would have to pay, and I've been told, I hope this is correct, that everything has been resolved, and this issue is now ready to be voted on, so.
Just go ahead on one, prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. We'll take public comment on item nine next. And John Walsh, if you'd like to come forward on item nine.
This is item nine. John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org. Facebooking at Mickey Jackson, M-I-K-I. Befriend us. This is a vacation, meaning to vacate, to hand over property at Bellingham Avenue from Hamlin, 220 feet north, northerly thereof. What you're doing here, of course, and you did that on my blog, is, what you often do is hand the property over to a well-connected developer. Tamales, tamales, tamales? I just want you to know, we love the tamale sellers, and I don't know what country they come from, but stay here. We love you. Okay? And I don't ask anyone when I get something to eat what country they live in. I just pay them.
Mr. Walsh, if you'd like to go back to the street vacation.
If I was racist, you would let me speak. But I understand that. Bellingham Avenue from Hamlin Street to approximately 228 feet northerly, we reserve our opinion. HollywoodHighlands.org. Tamales, tamales, tamales.
Thank you. We'll go to item number 24 next. And Arnold Sacks, if you'd like to give us your comments on item 24. And then, Matt Dowd will follow on item 24 also.
Yes, thank you. Thank God for the Sunshine Canyon Community Amenities Fund. Isn't this the same fund that was vetting out the police department so that they could maintain or man the new police station, the new police, the correction, the jail facilities at the new police station? Funding for additional graffiti and weed abatement services. Question, isn't, I believe, graffiti a precursor to community, the downside of a community? Wouldn't that, don't you think that that would be something that would fall into the CRA's purview? Why, again, is CRA, oh, well, maybe that's because there's not a CRA community redevelopment agency in this district. That's why they have to have the Sunshine Canyon Community Land Amenities Trust Fund used. So if you can use that fund for this, and you can use this fund, borrow money out of this fund, to provide manpower for the new police department jail facilities, why can't you use this fund to hire new workers to pay, as you might have read, CRA funds in other cities are being used to pay for city workers? Why can't you use this fund to pay for city workers? What are the restrictions on this fund? It doesn't seem to be any restrictions. You're using it for making a loan to borrow for police staffing. You're using it for graffiti and weed abatement. Maybe you can use it for street furniture, or is there a $50,000 fund for that also? Thank you.
Thank you, Matt Dowd is our next speaker on 24. Then John Walsh.
Yes, well, the previous speaker makes some really interesting valid points about where, see, I get it. I get it. See, we made the Sunshine Canyon Amenities Trust Fund so that Greg Smith and Dennis Zein can pilfer out of it. Because that's what this looks like. And that's what it looks like. It's what I'm saying. Because all of a sudden, oh, yeah, we need additional graffiti and weed abatement, and it says it right here, solely for the benefit of Council District 12. Well, where's my $80,000 for Council District 11 for weed abatement? I'm tired of it. Weeds everywhere, growing out of these pot shops and all over back fences.
If you could bring it back to what this is.
I'm talking about fucking weed abatement.
Sir, you're out of order, and you're being disruptive. If you could please remove him from the chambers. John Walsh, if you'd please remove Mr. Dowd. Mr. Walsh is our next speaker. Sir, you're continuing to be disruptive. You're being expelled for the disruption. Thank you. Not being expelled for the words, but for the disruption, sir. John Walsh is our next speaker.
For the record, he was still causing a disruption even after he was ejected.
Correct, yes. Mr. Walsh, if you'd like to come forward on this item. Did Mr. Walsh leave? Okay, he's not here. We'll go to item 26. Mr. Sacks, you're the next speaker on item number 26. We have one minute left, sir.
Certainly glad you're taking up this new program. Thank you for presenting that to the public, that you're taking all public comment on all these items. Question, this is a tax, a case regarding collection of business taxes owed by the defendant. So what if the name on this business tax, or in this case, was different than the name used by the so-called defendant? Let me give you an example. Here's a letter dated to the Tax and License Field Inspector, Los Angeles County Tax Collected. On behalf of Administrative Services Co-op, doing business as Yellow Cab Company, United Checker Cab and Fiesta Taxi. Here's what the city council said in its agenda from 11/17. South Bay Cooperative Incorporated doing business as United Checker Cab Company. That's a different name. How do you collect taxes from a name that's different from what the company says it is and what the city says it is? How is that relevant? It's probably relevant to this case. How do you collect taxes when the names don't?
We have item 26 now before us. Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Parks, let's take nine and 24. And we've gone through 26 already, so let's take those three together unless anybody wants to speak on 26 further. Let's prepare the roll on those three and tabulate the vote.
Mr. President, pardon me for clarification. Item 26, there is a recommendation to approve an offering compromise in the amount of $250,000 to settle all amounts owed to the city for business tax liabilities in the case entitled Mighty Net Incorporated versus City of Los Angeles.
Sounds like a good recommendation. Let's go ahead and open the roll on those three. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, that is approved. Mr. Parks.
Twelve forthwith.
Yes, we'll send 12 forthwith without objection. I had said 30 as well earlier, make sure we can send that forthwith. And that will take us now into closed session. Unless there's anything further anybody would like to say in open session on any of those items that are before us, items 25, 27, 28, and 29. Seeing none, in accordance with California state law, we will now go into closed session to discuss legal matters. We'll come back into open session to announce any actions that we have taken. Thank you for your patience, and we will be back in open session after we take those items up. Thank you very much.[1346.83]
When, to paint her garage, workmen could come back there and paint her garage and
When, to paint her garage, workmen could come back there and paint her garage and
do some, some work on her garage roof.
do some, some work on her garage roof.
That was the only way they could get to the repair job and the paint job was through
That was the only way they could get to the repair job and the paint job was through my neighbor's yard.
my neighbor's yard.
I felt that they would damage the tree, so that was my biggest concern. I felt that they would damage the tree, so that was my biggest concern.
I didn't have the money to hire a lawyer, so as a last resort, I heard about dispute resolution.
Sometimes situations require in-person meetings, and then we actually have a formal meeting, a mediation meeting that's set up here in the building, and we invite the parties to come in at a particular date and time.
We need to have a respectful process. The fact that you both agreed to be here today is very, very important. This is an opportunity to listen to each other and not to...
I do not give advice. I do not tell them what to do, how to make decisions of what they should do. And I bring them together with the hope of the two of them working out whatever the dispute or whatever the conflict may be between them, coming to their own conclusion. And I like to think of what I do as kind of leveling the playing field for parties involved in dispute or a conflict.
Once the ground rules are established, the neutral party, or mediator, is accountable for holding people to those rules. Now, the rules actually create a different view than what was held before by both people. So the ground rules are really what creates the view. You could, for instance, um, I want you to listen to the other person in a respectful manner, and I want you to listen to a new way of looking at this problem. See, those two ground rules are absolutely essential to being able to resolve the incident in a different way.
Can you please tell me what are your concerns about having the tree trimmed and why it's so important to you?
I'm concerned that they will damage my tree.
I do a lot of listening. I try very hard to hear what the parties are saying, but the most difficult thing of all, I think, is to get the parties themselves to come up with a solution.
We will take responsibility for the workman to not damage her tree or her plants.
So we have some new information here. Did you have any idea that she would be willing to supervise?
No, this is the first time I've ever even heard her say that.
Our job is not to find the solution and convince the parties of it, because we've been taught that's not our role. The solution is supposed to come from the parties themselves. We have to kind of help them to distill that.
This is something that you haven't shared with each other before, and it sounds like it might make a big difference for you.
We give them a chance to talk to one another and a chance to look at this with new ground rules, and ask, based on what they hear, is there any new action that can be taken?
Thanks very much for being here today.
You were very helpful.
Thank you. Congratulations.
The benefits of mediation are many. It's free, it's quick, and it's fair. More than 80% of the people who seek mediation as a means to resolve their disputes report they achieve a satisfactory result. With the dispute resolution process, individuals retain control over the decisions that affect their lives, and cost savings to the community are substantial.
I think our diversity, our rapidly changing demographics and our diversity is a major undercurrent of the need for mediation, the diversity for the conflicts and the disputes that arise.
It upset me that, you know, racism still exists in this country today, and I needed a way to channel that anger, you know, to do something with that. So I called the dispute resolution program up at the L.A. City Attorney's Office.
The cases that go to mediation have two, two qualities that stand out in my memory. One is that they're usually complicated. Frequently, there's more than two people involved. And the second quality is there's usually a good charge of anger behind them. Somebody is really angry.
Shannon, in order to help us understand the way your business operates, could you explain why you would take a watch from one customer to repair and not take it from another?
Customers have come in for repairs. After the repairs are completed, they say this is not repaired the way they want it. The expenditure is mine. I have become leery of ethnic, certain ethnic groups because of this problem.
And David, as you listen to her explain that it's certain ethnic groups, there are ethnic people that are causing the problem, how's that make you feel?
It's not fair. It makes me feel angry and frustrated at the fact that she's judging me on the basis of my skin.
I am not a bigot.
Whoa, whoa, wait, wait, wait a minute. Whoa, whoa, remember, Shannon, we agreed that we would listen to each other. One person would speak at a time.
Sometimes emotion gets in the way, and as, as the mediator and the neutral party, I try to guide them so that they, they stick with the subject and they stick with the dispute as to why they came here in the first place.
We, as human beings, are much more alike than we are different. We all have the same needs. We basically have the same desires. And I don't think there's any dispute or conflict between humans that cannot be resolved if two parties, or both sides, are willing to come together and sit down with an open mind and sincerely express their interest and their concerns.
It would be nice if you wouldn't generalize. Uh, I'm an individual, and you, just based on the color of my skin, you shouldn't assume things.
I'm sorry. I am truly, truly sorry.
Very often, conflict can be an opportunity for growth.
I heard something, such a very important word. I am, words. I'm so very sorry. What are your feelings about what you just heard?
Well, I feel like some justice has been done, and I accept your apology. It was very sincere.
I'm sorry.
And that is such a nice symbol.
I teach at UCLA, and I go home many days wondering if I ever made a difference in students' lives or other people's. And from here, you usually go home feeling really good, have had at least one mediation during the day. And, um, you know, in terms of the direct human experience, it's immediate feedback. Immediate feedback.
One of the principal elements in the effectiveness of the dispute resolution program are the community volunteers who make up the mediation staff. But just who are they? And where do they come from?
The people who primarily work to do the mediations are community volunteers from every walk of life. We are proud that we draw a very diverse group of people, males, females, elderly, young people, full-time workers, uh, caretakers, and just the full range of our community members are people who come to volunteer with us to help resolve disputes.
More than 1,000 trained volunteer mediators, arbitrators, and facilitators representing every ethnic and geographic element of Los Angeles County are available to help resolve disputes. Certified volunteer mediators are trained with a focus on cross-cultural relations and violence prevention. New volunteer mediators are recruited and trained approximately twice a year. The program provides additional services including information, referrals, problem assessment, conciliation, facilitation, fact-finding, and consultation.
What was important about the Los Angeles City Program was that it monitors all the residents of, um, Los Angeles City.
At the time that I used the dispute resolution program, I was working patrol in one of the divisions throughout the city, and I was assigned as a senior lead officer. So I received a lot of phone calls from, uh, citizens that were having problems in their neighborhoods. Uh, I had two separate occasions, two different neighborhoods that were involved in a neighbor dispute. So what was happening for us is that we were getting a lot of radio calls generated in regards to this dispute. Um, a lot of police service was being needed out there, but actually, it wasn't a police matter. It was more, um, not even a civil matter, just neighbors that were having a hard time getting along. Um, but being that we were having to respond so often, I needed to come up with a solution to help them resolve their differences. And that's where I used the dispute resolution program. And, um, on two separate occasions, one of the mediators came in, and we sat down with everybody. Everybody discussed their issues, and they helped them come to a solution. And although they weren't the best of friends afterwards, we quit getting radio calls, and their quality of life improved.
The Los Angeles Dispute Resolution Program receives grant funding from the County of Los Angeles's Department of Community and Senior Services and from the county's dispute resolution program special fund. The program is regarded as so successful that it has won awards from the County Board of Supervisors for outstanding contributions towards the resolution of conflict in Los Angeles County. The success that has been achieved by the Los Angeles Dispute Resolution Program has not gone unnoticed. Even the U.S. State Department has directed foreign countries to study the Los Angeles Program as a model implementation of a dispute resolution program. Many countries hope to develop similar programs to alleviate cluttered courts and violent confrontations. Capitalizing on the high level of success achieved by the Los Angeles Dispute Resolution Program, important future goals for the program include increasing the public's awareness and utilization of its services.
It's the quality of work that they've done and the volume that they continue to do that's made it a successful program in the county's eyes.
Disputes, uh, are just, uh, an ongoing process of the way people live in the county and city of Los Angeles, and need programs like this to try to change people's attitudes, uh, the way they handle disputes, the way they work with their neighbors, uh, family, friends, uh, in the workplace.
The whole concept to me is fascinating, because it's, it's simple. It's just simple, but why more people don't use mediation or why more people haven't heard about mediation, that seems to be the, the mystery to me.
The help that I have received is, uh, is fantastic.
I absolutely recommend this program to anyone, because it gives you an opportunity to resolve problems in a non-violent way. It gives you an opportunity to take the anger away. It gives you an opportunity to look at the other person's standpoint and make a fair decision or come to a fair agreement that suits everybody in the room.
If you have a dispute with your neighbors, by all means, attempt to resolve it with If you have a dispute with your neighbors, by all means, attempt to resolve it with the mediation available through the dispute resolution program. the mediation available through the dispute resolution program.
If you'd like to contact the Office of the Los Angeles City Attorney's Dispute Resolution If you'd like to contact the Office of the Los Angeles City Attorney's Dispute Resolution Program for any further information, please call 213-485-8324. Program for any further information, please call 213-485-8324. A community volunteer will be happy to help you. A community volunteer will be happy to help you.
Moving is who we are. Inside and out. We breathe in so that we can breathe out. So that we can breathe in again. We dream. Awake and asleep. We laugh. We talk with our hands. We give it a whirl. We become. We move our bodies and minds in constant conversation. And no matter how much we do it, it's never enough. We know this to the core. That as long as we are breathing, there is moving to be done. Multiple sclerosis stops people... ...from moving. People with MS understand something about moving that is hard for most of us to comprehend. That moving is not a guarantee.
MS is a disease that damages myelin, the protective tissue that surrounds the nerve fibers of the brain and spinal cord. When a person has MS, myelin is lost. And that leaves behind scar tissue called sclerosis.
The scar tissue disrupts the electrical impulses that move information from the brain to the body and makes movement difficult.
No one knows what causes MS, and there is no cure.
The effects of MS are unpredictable and show up in different ways in different people. One person may experience memory loss and fatigue, while another may suddenly lose the ability to see.
Someone might lose their balance and have trouble walking, while another may have slurred speech and tremors.
For some, the symptoms of MS come and go. In others, they last forever.
The National Multiple Sclerosis Society is a collective of passionate individuals united by a common goal: to address the challenges of each person whose life is affected by MS. The National MS Society leaves these initiatives because we believe that moving is not just something you can or can't do. But rather is who you are. That if you are alive, you are connected to the potential, the hope, the momentum of it all. You move along with, because of, and in spite of the great big turning world.
Hello, I'm Anita Chambers. I'm sitting here in Marchmont, and you are watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
In LA this week...
City leaders find the money to put 27 police officers back on the streets. I'm Anita Bennett, and I'll explain how one San Fernando Valley community is helping to pay for it. That's just ahead.
Beverly Hills BMW has found a new home right here in the Miracle Mile. How the auto dealership plans on revitalizing the city of Los Angeles. I'm Yana K. The details coming up.
Enjoying morning coffee in a front row seat as jumbo jets pull in for their landing. Plane spotters, you won't want to miss this. Coming up.
Hello and welcome to LA this week. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. Twenty-seven Los Angeles police officers are headed back to the street after the city council shifted money to get them off guard duty at the new jail. As Anita Bennett reports, the money comes courtesy of an interest-free loan.
Instead of walking the beat at the new metropolitan detention center, 27 LAPD officers are returning to the streets.
This is an important moment in the city of LA. It shows that people can be creative at times of need.
Councilman Greg Smith just announced a $640,000 loan from an environmental fund in his district. The money will be used to help the cash-strapped LAPD.
We'll get through this tough time. And with the kind of help that Greg Smith has given us today, we'll get through it better.
Right now, 83 cops have been taken off their normal beats to fill in for furloughed detention officers at the new jail. While the loan won't replace every reassigned LAPD officer, city leaders vow it will make a difference.
These funds will not only eliminate furloughs for civilian detention officers, but it allows Chief Beck to redeploy 27 police officers back to patrol status.
The money comes from a trust fund reserved for improvement projects around Sunshine Canyon landfill in Granada Hills. And while some critics claim the loan is illegal, Councilman Smith disagrees.
As far as this fund goes, the city attorney did determine it was legal to do it in this way as long as the money gets repaid. And also, we're not asking for any interest back on it.
City leaders made the loan official at a signing ceremony outside the new jail.
Now, the money being used will keep those officers on the streets until July 1st, when the city's new budget takes effect. After that, city leaders will have to look for other solutions. In downtown Los Angeles, in front of police headquarters, I'm Anita Bennett for LA this week.
Councilman Smith's motion to issue the loan was seconded by Council President Pro Tem Jan Perry. The LAPD remembers its first female officer killed in the line of duty with a solemn ceremony for Officer Tina Kerbrat, who passed away 20 years ago this month. As Gil Reyes reports, her legacy inspires people to this day.
With the sound of bagpipes, the LAPD's North Hollywood Division remembered one of its own, Officer Tina Kerbrat, killed by a suspect's bullet back in 1991, just four months after graduating from the academy. She had just turned 34.
She was that woman with the winning smile and a giving heart who treasured her family and was hopelessly devoted to her children. In the short time she was on the department, she made a lasting impression on those that knew her.
Though considered a good cop, the LAPD's first female officer killed on the job struggled with running exercises while at the academy. But the mother of two was determined to make it in this mostly male occupation.
Tina, who never quit, was trailing near the back of the class. I ran up next to her, and I inspired her, "Keep going, stay up with the class." After six months of hard work and dedicated effort, Tina graduated.
In honor of Kerbrat, the LAPD women's running team will participate in the Baker to Las Vegas relay, a 120-mile run through tough terrain. The women hope to beat a 20-year-old record.
Well, the record is 15 hours, 35 minutes, and 50 seconds, and we want to do it at least in 15 hours.
You're gonna blow the record away.
We want to blow the record away.
And I'm sure that she is looking down on all of this with a smile on her face.
Regardless of what happens in Vegas, her legacy will live on within the department, particularly on graduation day. That's when the award for Most Improved Cadet is handed out as the Tina Kerbrat Award. In Elysian Park, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Officer Kerbrat's two children recently graduated from college. Her husband is an LA City Fire Battalion chief. LA is getting an influx of new businesses moving into the city thanks to a new city tax break. And Gensler, a global giant, is one of those new kids on the block. Anna Marcos has more.
This empty space in downtown LA will soon transform into an architectural gem. Gensler, a world-class architectural firm, becomes part of the new wave of businesses moving into LA to take advantage of a three-year moratorium on the gross receipts tax for new incoming businesses.
On the city council, we were able to establish a business tax holiday for new businesses locating in the city. And thus far, it seems to be working.
Gensler will move out of Santa Monica to come to LA. It will bring some 250 jobs with it, and that number could grow to almost 400 jobs in the next five years.
For an architectural firm, we're always looking to the future. And we truly believe downtown LA is the future. We believe with the infrastructure, we believe with South Park, we believe with the potential new stadium, we believe downtown is the future. And as people who want to be involved in creating that future, we really felt like we had to get downtown.
The move is good news for the City of Angels, a city with a 12.5% unemployment rate and a looming budget deficit of $350 million. This, in spite of the fact it's already cut $1 billion in expenses over the last two years and laid off 4,000 employees.
We've got to change the paradigm. We've got to grow the pie. We've got to bring businesses into Los Angeles.
Gensler plans to redesign the building so that it not only becomes an architectural gem, but an environmental one as well, with platinum-level LEED certification, the highest environmental standard. LA city leaders hope it becomes a big draw for art, for environmental design, and for more business in the future. I'm Anna Marcos for LA this week.
Recent projects Gensler has designed include the Ritz-Carlton Hotel, the Marriott Hotel at LA Live, and many more local projects. And another business-changing zip codes is the Beverly Hills BMW. As Yana K. explains, the move from 90210 to 90036 is a win-win for the dealership and for LA.
Mayor Antonio Villarosa is taking a tour of this brand-new, 350,000-square-foot Beverly Hills BMW auto dealership. Though the dealership's name says Beverly Hills, this new facility isn't in Beverly Hills at all. It has found a new home in LA's Miracle Mile District at 5070 Wilshire Boulevard.
Not only will this auto dealership help spur job creation, it'll also generate much-needed sales tax revenue.
Beverly Hills BMW will also take advantage of a business tax holiday which exempts companies from paying the gross receipts tax for three years, an economic revitalization plan created and implemented by Mayor Antonio Villarosa to spur growth and jobs. Beverly Hills BMW's move is the first time in 25 years that an auto dealership has moved to Los Angeles from another city. Now, the move is expected to bring in 150 jobs and generate $150 million in revenue this year.
We're confident that, you know, the building, that building the state-of-the-art facility here in the city of Los Angeles was the right choice. And we're proud to be the first dealership to move into the city.
City officials say auto dealerships are the largest contributor of sales tax to the city's budget, generating $3.3 billion in sales every year and paying $271 million in annual taxes.
When you run for office, you want to create jobs, not, uh, not cut them. Uh, you, you, you want to grow the pie. And the way for us to get out of this crisis is to be more business-friendly.
And by being more business-friendly, Mayor Villarosa hopes to create new jobs and opportunities, one business and one policy at a time. I'm Yana K. for LA this week.
According to a USC study, the business tax holiday will create 55,000 jobs in the city of Los Angeles. And for the first time, the city of Los Angeles has partnered with local car dealers to provide internships for auto repair students. As Anita Bennett tells us, the internships have the potential for big payoffs down the road.
These auto repair students at LA Trade Technical College have a chance to do something none of their classmates has done before.
Students will be paid to work side by side with professional auto technicians as they earn their degree at either Trade Tech, well, at Autoday, or Pierce College.
The internships are part of a new program to give students hands-on training. City leaders came up with the idea at last year's LA Auto Show after meeting with carmakers and dealers.
We started talking about their needs, and it became clear that they couldn't find trained entry-level people. Mechanics, service technicians, people who want a career in sales.
Now that's about to change. Four dealerships have signed on to take part, including the Shamus Group, which owns its Porsche dealership in downtown LA. The dealership will let the students get under the hoods of their cars while preparing them for what the CEO of this dealership says will be good careers.
One thing I really like to stress is that the kind of jobs that come out of these programs are good-paying, family-supporting jobs.
It's exactly the kind of opportunity that brought Jesse Melendez to LA Trade Technical College.
Being here at LA Trade for three years and the, uh, and the abilities that they, that they have acquired from the programs, they will show those abilities at the workplace, at the internship.
Among the skills Jesse and the other students are learning: rebuilding engines, troubleshooting electrical problems, and hybrid repairs. All skills with the potential for promising careers down the road. I'm Anita Bennett for LA this week.
In addition to that Porsche dealership, Galpin Ford, Miracle Mile BMW, and Longo Toyota are also taking part. The internships are set to begin in the next few weeks. And more job news: Through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act's High Growth Sector Training Grant, the city has provided over $1.2 million in helping Angelenos overcome barriers to employment. Rasha Goel explains.
I'm ready. I'm ready to take off and take this wherever it's gonna take me. Wherever it leads me, that's where I'm gonna go. The sky's the limit.
Jermina Parker, a single parent, is one of 18 other graduates who are flying high. Thanks to a program called Bankworks, she and other graduates are hopeful and excited about a new career path.
It's really geared towards people who are interested in starting a long-term career in banking. And so we help them, give them all the tools that they need.
I look at Bankworks as us opening a door. It's now up to the graduates to walk through that door and to work hard and demonstrate that that opportunity is one they're, one, gonna take control of, and two, gonna leverage into a career in these banks.
The Bankworks program was created by Jewish Vocational Service, a nonprofit organization that helps people find jobs and support their families. The organization partnered with the city of Los Angeles's High Growth Financial Sector Initiative and local banks to offer the eight-week program which provides job training, job placement assistance, and ongoing coaching for career advancement in the financial sector.
With the challenges we face in today's economy, the Bankworks program is more relevant and valuable than ever. And we could not do it without all of our generous banking partners, who wear two hats: as donors and employers.
This is a benefit, uh, to our corporate partners. Because now they got folks that have the skill set, and certainly the Spanish, the ganas, the willingness to go do it and, and go to work and kind of contribute.
Bankworks is a program for people from all walks of life. It's not only for those who are just starting their careers after high school, but for many, it's a new beginning. In fact, many of the graduates here are either single parents looking for a new career or have lost their jobs.
I was in the fitness industry for the last 10 years, and now I'm looking for something a lot more long-term.
And that search begins immediately after they receive their certificates. Graduates have the opportunity to interview with the banks on the spot. From the Expo Center, I'm Rasha Goel for LA this week.
After completing the program, nearly 80% of Bankworks graduates are employed. Airplane aficionados, you're clear to land at the LAX Observation Deck, that is. It's a favorite among plane spotters and sightseers alike, and what a sight to see. During a recent outing, Gil Reyes shows us a new generation of international jumbo jets.
Arriving on time, this imposing sight: Air New Zealand's new Airbus A320. Bearing the sleek black colors of New Zealand's rugby team, it made a one-time-only stop at LAX, a break in the delivery flight home from a factory in France.
Well, it really doesn't stop me, the weather, because, you know, I think it's actually more interesting when it's raining. And I, I think it's just way cooler with the rain.
Just like some boys, I guess, like cars, this boy likes airplanes.
Wet weather didn't hamper the spirits of these airplane aficionados at the first Sunday morning coffee event at LAX. It took place on the airport's Observation Deck atop the iconic theme building. It reopened last summer after a three-year, $12 million renovation, including earthquake retrofitting.
This was a way to get the word out, again, to help promote that the Observation Deck is open. It was very popular before we closed it, and we're hoping to bring it, bring it back to that level of popularity.
Fans also got a peek at Australia's Qantas Airbus A380. The world's largest commercial airliner recently resumed daily service between LAX and Sydney. Also appearing, this rare bird on the West Coast: Air New Zealand's new Boeing 777-300.
So we had some very unique things happening today.
The ruthless Observation Deck offers a 360-degree view of Southern California. Telescopes included, umbrellas are not. At LAX, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
The deck is open on weekends 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Free coffee and snacks are provided on special occasions only. LAX hopes to have another Sunday coffee event in March. The month of February is National Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. Cindy San Luis tells us how a local school is educating its students on this issue.
Adolescence is often when people have their first boyfriend or girlfriend, but there's a startling statistic that comes with the territory. Almost half of Los Angeles high school students, 43% of girls and 43% boys, report experiencing some sort of physical abuse from a dating partner. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, one in 11 adolescents have been the victim of physical dating violence. And nationwide, the number is close to 1.5 million teenagers.
I never seen or had any friends that were in a relationship with violence, but I hope it would never happen to anyone.
So, Mayor Antonio Villarosa joined nonprofits Break the Cycle and Peace Over Violence at an assembly in support of Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. It's, um, really a strong and silent epidemic that we could be doing a lot more to address. Speakers talk to teens about what makes a healthy relationship and what is abuse.
We made a very own video showing how violence is not sexy, violence is not good.
That constant monitoring, that, um, fear that you're walking on eggshells is not how your relationship should make you feel. You should feel supported and like you're growing as being part of the partnership.
Some people do take, um, to the next level, they act, they carry, they get carried away with, with their relationship, they get jealous, and that causes problems.
I don't believe in violence, so when it comes in a relationship, I think you should just walk away.
A message that heartbreak may be a part of growing pains, but never violence. I'm Cindy San Luis for LA this week.
The Teen Dating Violence Awareness and Prevention Initiative was spearheaded by teens across the nation who chose to take a stand and put a stop to teen dating violence. Delta's flying high on the heels of a new agreement with the City of Angels, and a reminder about a tax credit you could qualify for. Also a Valentine to our city's senior citizens. These stories and more in City Beat. L.A. Kings mascot Bailey joined Delta Airlines executives to celebrate a new multi-year deal to make Delta the official airline of the L.A. Kings. Mayor Antonio Villarosa was also on hand to celebrate the agreement, which makes Delta also an official founding partner and official airline of Staples Center. The luncheon was held at downtown's Grammy Museum, also a new Delta partner.
We're excited about the partnership that we have with Delta. Uh, not only are there 2,800 employees, but increasingly, uh, more and more flights.
The luncheon also celebrated Delta Sky Magazine's upcoming Los Angeles issue. Delta's in-flight magazine reaches over 5 million people each month. LA City Controller Wendy Gruhl is calling for the consolidation of the city's various financial offices in her latest audit. It's all part of Gruhl's continuing effort to streamline city bureaucracy as the city faces a $350 million budget deficit next fiscal year. Currently, the city's financial operations are distributed among several city departments, including the Office of Finance, the City Administrative Office, and the Office of the Treasurer. Gruhl is recommending that the Treasurer's Office be consolidated with the Office of Finance immediately. We're right in the middle of tax season, but there is an upside. Councilmember Richard Alarcon is reminding qualifying residents of the Earned Income Tax Credit, which can range into the thousands of dollars per household and which often goes unclaimed.
Last year, over $1 billion went unclaimed in California. Uh, and over $300 million is left unclaimed in Los Angeles alone.
EITC is designed to lower the tax burden on low-income working families. Alarcon also honored the city's 21 local family source centers for offering access to free tax preparation to low- and moderate-income residents through its Volunteer Income Tax Assistance, or VIDA, program. A line formed around the block for the hottest ticket in town. Some 600 dapperly dressed seniors attended the fourth annual Senior Valentine Ball at the Los Angeles Christian Presbyterian Church in El Salino. They were treated to a formal dance and dinner hosted by Council District 14 a few days before Valentine's Day.
We're gonna get to dance and just have fun with our friends.
Folks from the Greatest Generation and all the sacrifices they paid for us. It's a small token of our appreciation.
And seniors did not go home empty-handed. There was a raffle with prizes, including gift baskets, gift certificates, and a big flatscreen TV. While some people celebrated Valentine's Day with dinner and dancing, others marked the holiday by adopting a furry friend. Anita Bennett takes us to an Adopt a Valentine Pet Festival. This dog is hamming it up in hopes of standing out from the pack. The hot dogging was all part of a pet adoption festival held to coincide with Valentine's Day.
This is our second annual Adopt a Valentine event. Uh, last year, we adopted 45 dogs and cats. This year, we're already at 30, and so we expect to go way over 45.
Friends of Herman Dog Park hosted the event, along with the city of LA's North Central Animal Shelter and other groups. Comedian Deborah Wilson of Mad TV fame was also there to lend a hand.
Mr. Wonderful! This is a German Shepherd child mix, black and brown. Mr. Wonderful is eight years old.
Dozens of families came out to enjoy the fun and to check out the four-legged friends. Activists say it's not just the animals that benefit from pet adoption, people do too.
These animals give love unconditionally, and I guarantee you, when you adopt, what you're actually doing is rescuing yourself.
Judging by the crowds, the call to adopt a furry Valentine was a barking success. I'm Anita Bennett for LA this week. The first 25 people to take home a pet received a $25 discount off adoption fees. A place of quiet contemplation and peaceful retreat right in the middle of the city. I'm talking about a new garden on the west side that some are comparing to an outdoor library. A celebration is underway as residents gather at the Westwood Gardens Park on South Glendon Avenue for its grand opening. This small park, which sits in the shadow of high rises, makes it the perfect oasis from the hectic demands of life in a big city.
When you come to Westwood, you see the buildings and the traffic and the parking lots and the commercial areas. But this is a neighborhood. This is a place that people live, a piece, a place that children grow up. This is a place that people come to work every day, and this park is really a focal point now for that community.
And the park couldn't have a better neighbor.
The park's location next to the Westwood Library makes it a perfect, uh, public open space to, to come and share ideas and read books and, and think about making a real change in the world.
Maybe have children from the library come over here and have storytelling. Um, anytime there's a park instead of a building, it's, it's a benefit. It'd be nice to check out a book and hang out here in the park. Um, and it's nice, it's safe, it's lit. So we've just been eager for it to open.
Park designers hope the now beautifully landscaped park can be a place for so-called quiet arts, like reading and painting, a far cry from the parking lot the land was once used for.
I guess in reality, we kind of did the reverse of the Joni Mitchell song, "Paradise," and put up a parking lot. We, uh, took out the parking lot and we put up paradise.
A paradise, indeed, where families can come, soak in the sun, and get away from it all, if only just for a moment. The park was built with about $300,000 of Quimby funds paid by developers. And in this week's list of things to do and exhibit at the museum, or how about one you can visit right from your couch? Enjoy an afternoon of chamber music, co-presented by the Los Angeles Philharmonic Association, on Saturday, February 26th, from 3:00 to 4:30 PM at the Mark Taper Auditorium. The Mark Taper is located at the Central Library downtown at 630 West 5th Street. To purchase tickets, call 213-228-7025, or go to allowedla.org. And if you want to check out some museum exhibits but are feeling a little lazy, go to the LA Public Library website at lapl.org/virgal, as in virtual gallery, to check out some of its past exhibits online. Exhibits include online photo galleries on the 1932 Olympic Games in the city of Los Angeles, California in the 1920s, or the fine art of film posters, all at the click of a mouse. Maybe what you find online will inspire you to make a trip to the library after all to see some current exhibits on display. And CSUN's China Institute and its Department of Art Galleries presents an exhibition of prints from Professor Guo Genshen, a visiting scholar from China's Shandong University, with an artist's reception and opening on Wednesday, March 2nd, from 5:00 to 7:00. an artist's reception and opening on Wednesday, March 2nd, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. The exhibit on display through March 10th at the CSUN Art and Design Center will include prints from posters designed by Professor Guo, as well as his graduate students. The artist's reception will be held at the CSUN Art and Design Center, Room 201, located at 18111 Nordoff Street in Northridge. You can call 818-677-2156 for more information. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at lecityview.org. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Hi, I'm Eric Garcetti, and I'm proud to represent Hollywood on the Los Angeles City Council. There are so many interesting things to see here, and today we'll show you two Hollywood landmarks, so let's go on location now. Built in 1927, Grauman's Chinese Theater is rich in movie tradition, with some of Hollywood's biggest names immortalized in the famous forecourt to the stars. Millions of visitors from all over the world come every year to find the cement handprints and footprints of their favorite stars, past and present. Since its grand opening with the premiere of Cecil B. Demille's The King of Kings, Grauman's Chinese Theater has always been a popular location for the biggest movie premieres. You can still catch a show at this elaborately decorated theater. You can also take a tour. Go online for more information. After you've seen Grauman's Chinese Theater, walk across the street and check out another Hollywood locale. The Hollywood Roosevelt Hotel was a favorite hangout of Hollywood legends such as Clark Gable, Marilyn Monroe, and even Sid Grauman. Its Blossom Room was the site of the very first Academy Awards. Though it came close to being torn down, the hotel was renovated in 2005, and now its poolside Tropicana bar has become a hotspot for Hollywood celebrities. You can go online to learn more about the Hollywood Roosevelt Hotel's current features and its storied history. It's all right here in Hollywood, so bring your family and check it out today.
Hi, I'm Shannon Lamert Park. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel.
Every year, nearly 4 million pets are killed in shelters due to overpopulation. These animals have done nothing wrong, they just don't have a home. The Pet Care Foundation does all it can to find loving homes, but it's hard. To help, please visit pets90210.org and donate or volunteer. Always spay or neuter your pets, and visit a city or county animal shelter near you and adopt a pet today. The love you find will be unconditional and endless.
Hello and welcome to Pets 90210. I'm Bill Crowell, your host for today, and we have a great show. You may want to get a pencil and paper because we're going to be showing you a lot of pets, and you have to have their impound number when you call. Again, all of our pets you can see on laanimalservices.com, and if you call about a pet that is on the air and it's already been adopted, please look at the website. There are so many pets that need homes here. There are six city shelters and six county shelters, and they're all full of animals. We have a great show. We have Reina Barker, our resident dog trainer, and as our guest today, we have Kristy Metropole from Stray Cat Alliance, one of my favorite organizations because we love the kitties, and they do great work, and we'll get right to her. Hi, Kristy.
Hi, Bill.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
So tell everybody, what does Stray Cat Alliance do?
Stray Cat Alliance is an organization that helps facilitate community members in taking care of cats in their world. So whether it's your neighborhood, or where you live, where you work, there are stray cats everywhere, and they need our help. We have a hotline, and we get hundreds of calls every month. People don't know what to do.
What's that number?
They also email us at info@straycatalliance.org. We answer all kinds of questions. We have six trap depots all throughout Southern California, from the San Fernando Valley to Covina, Los Angeles, and we teach people how to trap, and humanely trap stray and feral cats. And we also advocate for them. There's many situations where apartment buildings, parks, hospitals, schools, the solution hotels is to eradicate the cats, trap them, and kill them. All that does is create a vacuum where new unfixed cats come in and start breeding. It's not a solution. It causes more problems, and it's not humane.
Right. So that was a lot of information. Explain a little bit about what is trap-neuter-return, TNR, and why is it important?
Trap-neuter-return is trapping a cat. It's neuter, which is also spay and neuter, getting the cat fixed, and returning them to their home. A lot of people think that cats are homeless. They immediately see a cat, they think, oh my gosh, if it doesn't have a home, I'm going to take them to the shelter. And we absolutely disagree. Cats do not belong in shelters, and usually, even if a cat is on the street, that is their home. However, they need humane and human intervention. They need to be spayed and neutered, and they need to be fed. It's not true people will dump their cats. Oh, my cat will just find food. A lot of cats starve on the streets, so they absolutely need to be spayed and neutered, and they need to be fed. And so that is what trap-neuter-return is. It's very important because for thousands of years, or hundreds of years, for more than 100 years, people have trapped cats and taken them to shelters. Shelters have been around for about 150 years, and they've been killed, and yet we have more cats than ever. So obviously, that does not, there's no solution in there. The solution is fixing them and putting them back.
Okay. So there's no difference biologically between a feral cat, a stray cat, and a domestic cat, right?
There's absolutely no difference. They are the same cats, sometimes in a different stage in their own life or in a generation. So all cats are domestic cats, all cats that we know that live in our homes, not, obviously, the wild breeds. But that's why we call them feral, because feral means not unsocialized. Feral dog, a feral cat, a feral horse. You wouldn't say a feral skunk, because skunks are wild.
Wild animals, right.
You wouldn't say a feral coyote, they're wild. But animals who are domesticated, then become wild or unsocialized, are called feral. So sometimes cats who live in our homes, they get kicked out, and they revert back to being unsocialized and scared, and they stay away, and they're considered a feral cat. Yet many feral cats on the street at one time lived with someone. They were somebody's pet.
Right.
Yeah. It's very important to understand that.
And will you, do you do low-cost spay-neuter services for people that just have a house cat that they want to have spayed or neutered?
We don't necessarily do, we are more focused on the strays, but people email us and call us all the time, and we send them to the appropriate place, because it's very important that you get your cat fixed.
Right. Because the cat overpopulation problem is huge.
It's huge.
And people may not know this, but cats reproduce 10 times faster than dogs.
Yeah, they do. And in warmer seasons, they breed all year, and they can breed three times a year.
Especially here in California, they breed pretty much all year long.
Yeah, they do.
So if people want to help you, tell us how they can help you.
We absolutely need volunteers. They can email us at info@straycatalliance.org. There's lots of things that we have. We need trappers, we need transporters, advocates. Oh, absolutely, checks help. We have spay-neuter clinic coming up. We have hotline people, fosters, adoptions, you name it. We need it, and we obviously need money for support, because this is how we keep these really vital programs going.
Great. Again, Stray Cat Alliance is a great organization. If you want to help the kitties, look up straycatalliance.org.
Yep.
And call them, email them, send them a check. Thanks a lot, Kristy.
Thank you, Bill.
So now we're lucky to have our dog trainer, Reina Barker, of Good Sense Dog Training. Hi, Reina.
Hi, Bill.
So let me ask you something.
Yes.
I have four cats at home.
Yeah.
I'm adopting a dog.
Oh.
What do I do?
Okay. First of all, whenever somebody says this, or says they want to get a dog and they have cats, or they have a dog and want to bring cats home, neither or, I have to ask, you know, how social is either animal with that other species? You know, has there been any interaction? Have you observed, are they afraid of the dogs, or is the dog's a prey-driven, you know, after small animals? You've got to know, you know, your animals before doing that. Here at West L.A., we do some cat checking, you know, cat testing with dogs. You know, people say they want to bring a dog home and do a cat home, and that's great if you can do that. But that's not just the magic wand either, because you still have to manage the environment. You still have to keep the animals safe. You have to do integration slowly. You have to be sure that no harm comes to either. You know, now typically, with a good calm dog, they work through that very well. I mean, if it doesn't have a high prey drive, then typically, they learn to, oh, what is that? And if you keep the cat at a distance and have the dog leashed and get to sniff each other in a reasonably controlled environment, then they learn to work through it. But there's some cats who just absolutely freak out around dogs. They haven't had exposure to them, they're scared of them. Nothing warms my heart more than cross-species integration. I think it is magical. I think it is wonderful. I have two rabbits and three dogs, and nothing warms my heart more than seeing my dog and my rabbit curled up together on the dog bed. It's fabulous.
Yeah, it is.
I have two rottweilers and a golden retriever, and one rottweiler and one of my golden, and my golden, they sleep with the rabbit. And the rabbit climbs over them and, you know, grooms them, and it's really sweet. My other rottweiler, my newer rottweiler, I've had to work the last three years in desensitizing him to the presence of the rabbit. Now, instead of whining and focused and anxious around the rabbit, he just looks at the rabbit, and I've allowed him to sniff him, and he doesn't have that urgency to chase. So it is management, it's time-consuming, it's keeping the animals safe, getting them used to each other in a controlled setting, so that's the main thing.
It sounds like I have to be careful which dog I adopt.
You do. You'd have to, like I say, you know, they help you here at West L.A. They cat test if you see a dog you like. They will say, well, let's go see how he is. And again, that's not the all answer either. You still let the whole have to, you know, we've had some disastrous things. People get complacent too soon and leave them alone to their own devices too soon. It may take months. So you have to be careful. You have to be careful.
Okay, great. If you have any questions about dog training, you can call or email Reina. The number's below. Our first dog's name is Annie, and her impound number is A1153228. She's a six-year-old spayed Staffordshire terrier, very sweet, good with kids and good with other dogs, and she's also already housebroken, and she's doing a great job with Reina there. So she sits on command, she gives kisses, she'd be a great family dog. Let's check it out. So our next dog is Ninja, and Ninja's impound number is A1169801. Ninja is a six-year-old Neapolitan Mastiff mix, neutered male, a gentle giant, great with other dogs, and very low-key, a sweet, sweet boy. Ninja's a beautiful dog, and if you want to get Ninja, come on down to the West L.A. Shelter and get Ninja. Okay, our next dog is Henry. Henry's impound number is A1140473. Henry is a two-year-old neutered male Dutch Shepherd mix, very smart, very playful, likes to fetch the ball, be a great family dog, especially if you have a lot of kids that were active and like to play ball and like to run around. Henry's a great dog for that. Our next dog is Frosty. Frosty's impound number is A1176642. Frosty's a spayed three-year-old terrier poodle mix, great with other dogs, is housebroken, but it says that Frosty snaps at small kids, so probably not a good dog to have around small children, but if your children are over the age of 10, probably okay for a family dog. If you want Frosty, come on down to the West L.A. Shelter. The number is on your screen right now. And now it's Jasmine's turn, and Jasmine's number is A1017102. Jasmine's a four-year-old spayed Chihuahua mix, so she's okay with other dogs and very friendly. She'd be a sweet little lapdog to sit next to you and watch TV. She's only four years old, so she's still got a lot of life in her. And the impound numbers are very important. You want to write these down. It's on your screen right now. If you don't have the impound number, then they won't be able to look up the dog that you're looking for. So if you want Jasmine, give the West L.A. Shelter a call, or just come on down. It's on Pico Boulevard, just west of the 405. Okay, here's our next dog, Pringle, and Pringle's impound number is A1164672. Pringle's two years old, neutered Chihuahua mix, plays great with other dogs, and is a very sweet boy. And you can see Chihuahua mix compared to the last one, it can be very different. A lot of things get labeled Chihuahua, but Pringle looks like a very sweet little boy, very interactive with Reina there, be a great family dog for you. Again, it's at the West L.A. Shelter. The impound number is A1164672. Come on down and get Pringle. Okay, here's Toby. Toby's number is A1177484. That's A1177484. Toby's a neutered terrier mix, five years old, very loving, great with other dogs, and loves to play. You can see he's a sweet, sweet dog, can be great for your family. And at five years old, he's still got at least another 10 years, so be a great dog to have around. So come on down to the West L.A. Shelter and get Toby. So here we have Wolfgang. Wolfgang's impound number is A1179150. Wolfgang's a male, he's just a puppy, eight months old, Dachshund mix, playful, good with other dogs. He's currently in the K9 Connection Program, so he's getting a lot of training, but he's still got that puppy in him, and he's going to want to play and need some training and have lots of energy. So if you're looking for a puppy and you want a small dog, Wolfgang looks like the ticket. He's here at the West L.A. Shelter, A1179150. And our last dog for this show is Luigi, and Luigi's number is A1179943. And our last dog for this show is Luigi, and Luigi's number is A1179943. Luigi's a nine-year-old neutered Chihuahua mini-Penpen mix, low-key, very sweet boy. And even though he's nine, he's still got a few years left in him. And if you're looking for a dog that just wants to sit with you and watch TV, or read a book, or go to the park and sit with you, Luigi's a great dog for you. Be very sweet and loving and just sit with you and keep you company. So again, Luigi's number is A1179943. He's at the West LA Shelter. If Luigi looks like what you want, come down and get him. So here we are in one of the cat rooms at the West LA Shelter, and our first kitty's name is Teacup. Of course, if you don't like that name, you can change it to anything you want. Teacup's number is, uh, Teacup's ID number is A1174650. Teacup is a female, says she was born in 2006, so she's about four or five years old, domestic short hair, black and white, or tuxedo kitty. And Teacup is beautiful. She just sneezes a little bit, but not to worry, that's, that's very common. And very sweet, loving little kitty. If you're looking for a tuxedo, sweet kitty, come on down and get Teacup. And now our next kitty is down in the basket there, sweet little calico. Calicos are almost always female, and unfortunately, we don't have a card for this little female, but she looks very sweet. She looks young, like maybe one or two years old, domestic short hair. And she's in the, there are two kitty rooms. She's in the one that's furthest north here in the West LA Shelter. And if you wanted to get her, come on down and say, this calico kitty is in, in the
Good afternoon, and we are back in open session. If we can go through the items that we voted on in closed session that require an open session vote as well.
Mr. President, would you like to start with item number 27?
That would be great.
On item 27, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $5 million in the case entitled Ryan Farhan versus City of Los Angeles.
And was it on 27 or 28, Ms. Perry?
Yeah, I just wanted to add some language that Mr. Parks had asked to be added at all city departments that are relevant, including the CAO, CLA, and the relevant council office be put together on a, um, task force or working group to look at options for these roles, whatever it may be, and, or if it's an assessment district or whatever, but to please come up with some options for us.
Okay. Let's go ahead. Mr. Reyes?
I'd like to ask for a motion that we get a listing of intersections that have a history of the level of liabilities that we heard today, to give us a sense of just how expansive this problem is on a citywide level, so we can formulate the strategies that I believe Councilman Parks wants to seek.
Okay. Okay, I'll second that. Yeah, Ms., Ms. Hahn?
Yeah, on that, I really want to really put the onus on the city attorney, DOT, LAPD, traffic. I want the three of those entities to, to work together to come up with what you just asked for, Mr. Reyes. That's what I want, because I think the three of them have this information that we need and want, and, and I want them to, not just to write letters to each other, but I want them to actually work on this together.
I'll take that as a friendly amendment and a second, maybe?
Yes. It's an angry friendly amendment.
Not angry towards Mr. Reyes, angry towards the others. There's embracing of Mr. Reyes. All right, with that, let's go ahead as amended. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item, please.
And for the record, the vote in closed session on that item was 12 to 0 with Councilmember Zine Smith and Cardinals absent.
Okay. Go ahead to the next item, please.
That brings us to item 28. Uh, item 28, there's a recommendation for settlement in the consolidated amount of $1,750,000 in the cases entitled Martha Ah and Shee Hee Ah versus City of Los Angeles, Mark Cauchem and Emily Cooper versus City of Los Angeles, and Kristen Escobar versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay.
And for the record, on 28, the vote in closed session was 12 to 0 with Councilmembers Zine, Smith, and Cardinals absent.
Okay, next item, please.
That brings us to item 29. There is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $839,000 in the case entitled Hector Burnman, uh, MD versus City of Los Angeles.
All righty, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on item 29 and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved as well. And is the only ones for open session? Or are there one more? That's it? Okay, next order of business, please.
Mr. President, Council has motions for posting and referral.
Let's post and refer those.
And Mr. President, Special One is also before us. I believe the maker of the motion will speak to the findings.
All right, on the findings, Ms. Hahn?
Uh, colleagues, um, this is, uh, a resolution, uh, that I would like us to, uh, vote on that will be, um, expressing our opposition to, uh, the federal government slashing all funding to Planned Parenthood. The reason, I believe it is, uh, Rule 23, is that we believe, uh, they could be voting, Senate could be voting on Monday, um, and we need to get our position, uh, on the record before then, so that's why I believe, uh, we can suspend the rules and vote on it today.
Anybody else on the findings? If not, uh, please prepare the roll on the findings and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Um, would you like to say anything more, or should we take a vote?
Yeah, I would like to take a vote.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on the substance then and tabulate the vote. I was asked if you wanted to say anything on the substance. Okay, hold on. For the vote, go ahead, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Since the posting of the last agenda, um, I learned that the, the House, uh, a vote by the House that funding for Planned Parenthood had been eliminated. Um, and we don't know when the Senate is going to hear this, but it could be Monday, which is why I wanted us to take a position. The House vetoed, uh, voted on an amendment that cuts all forms of federal funding for Planned Parenthood, which operates a network of more than 800 family planning clinics nationwide. Uh, Planned Parenthood receives roughly $330 million in federal assistance annually through Medicaid, maternal and child health block grants, and other sources. It would also entirely eliminate a program known as Title 10, uh, which provides more than $300 million in aid for family planning and reproductive health, much of which is directed towards low-income families. And to be clear, uh, federal funding does not go to abortion procedures. That is, uh, not allowed. But instead, these monies would go to pay for vital services that Planned Parenthood centers provide to low-income men and women who get, who go there to receive contraception, screening, treatment for sexually transmitted diseases, cancer screening, um, and testing, and the most important prenatal care. Uh, so I believe that this measure would put at risk the lives and safety of millions of American women, many of those who reside here in the City of Los Angeles, and I would like us to go on record opposing these cuts.
Thank you. Please prepare the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Uh, next order of business, please. Send that forth with.
Mr. President, uh, Councilmember Zine requests to be excused on March 18th for city business. That meets Council policy.
So Zine's excused?
The desk is clear.
All right, announcements, colleagues? Ms. Perry? Uh, adjourned motion? Any announcements? Now, can I please ask everybody to rise for our adjourned motions? Mr. Alaco.
Members, uh, many of us know Steve, Stephen Vettis, uh, city councilmember in San Fernando, also a deputy for Senator Kevin DeLeón, uh, and formerly, uh, field director for Cindy Montañez in, uh, my council area. Uh, his father passed away, uh, and I'd like to adjourn in his memory. Ferenc, Frank Vettis was born on February 25th, 1936, in Budapest, Hungary. He was orphaned during World War II and grew up in several regions near Budapest, including Hungary's wine region. During his teens, he was educated and trained as a machinist in communist Hungary. He participated in several sports, including soccer, weightlifting, and gymnastics. And as a youth in the Hungarian revolt against Soviet-controlled Hungary, Ferenc left Hungary when the large Soviet force entered Hungary to brutally crush the revolt. Immigrating to the US in 1957, he settled in New York City and Buffalo, New York, where he learned basic English by sneaking into movies for hours upon hours. After a few harsh winters, Ferenc moved to Tucson, Arizona, where he worked as a machinist and mechanic. It was in Tucson, Arizona, that his first child, Loretta Vettis, was, uh, born. Ferenc became a US citizen in 1963 and changed his name to Frank. Uh, after a short stay in San Diego, uh, he settled in southeast Los Angeles and met and fell in love with his, uh, wife, uh, Margarita. Uh, they married November 23rd, 1974, and raised their, uh, family on California Street in Huntington Park. Uh, their first home was Frank's wedding present to Margarita, and she gave birth to their first child, Steven, in 1975, and the second daughter, Priscilla, in 1977. Frank was a machinist at Angeles Sanitary Chem Company for 40 years, retiring in 2002. He was a proud and active member of the United Steelworkers Union Local 8957. During retirement, he enjoyed spending time with his family and playing with, um, his dogs, Max, Olin, Penny, and Eba. Uh, he was a part of his three children, whose careers have been dedicated to public service. Loretta is a federal agent for the Department of Homeland Security. Steven is a councilmember in the City of San Fernando, an employer of the state senate. And Priscilla is a public school teacher for Los Angeles Unified School District. Uh, during his life, Frank was known to be an avid table tennis player. As a young father, he would take his two oldest children, uh, to Chinatown to watch him play. He enjoyed spending weekends at MacArthur and Lafayette Park, uh, near downtown Los Angeles, where he often met other Hungarian immigrants, uh, for a game of chess. Uh, after his chess masters, he enjoyed a cup of coffee at nearby Langer's Deli on Alvarado Street, uh, and he became a seasoned bowler and spent lots of time at Gage Bowl in Huntington Park. Uh, later in life, Frank was diagnosed with Parkinson's disease. He passed away in his sleep on February 19th, 2011. He is survived by his wife, his three grown children, his, and, uh, three grandchildren, Jesse Junior, Isabella, and Vincent Ferenc. Uh, during the last week of his life, Frank was excited to know that his son, Steven, and his wife Cynthia were expecting his next grandchild in August. Uh, the viewing will be, um, at 9 o'clock Thursday, uh, the 24th of February at Klinker Cunningham Gara Mortuary, uh, in Huntington Park. A mass at 10 a.m. at Saint Matthias Church in Huntington Park, uh, and, uh, the burial will follow immediately at Resurrection Cemetery in Montebello.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I'd like us to adjourn the memory of Josephine Jabetka, uh, known as Jo, who was a resident of San Pedro, who just passed away on February 15th. She was born in New Jersey, but grew up in Van Nuys. Um, she married her husband Nicholas, uh, in 1944, and during World War II, she worked in San Pedro as a teletype operator at Bethlehem Steel. After the war, she and her husband Nick settled in San Pedro to raise their family, and over the years, she was busy as a homemaker, mother, grandmother. She was actively involved in school activities for her children and her grandchildren, and volunteered for many years at Saint Peter's Episcopal Church in San Pedro. Jo was preceded in death by her husband Nick and her son, Mark. She is survived by her two children, Felice and Nicholas, and a brother, Alvin. She's also survived by four beloved grandchildren and one great-grandson. Her funeral services were held earlier this week. I also would like us to adjourn the memory of Robert Jetley, who passed away on February 13th. Um, he was known to his friends and family as Bob the Plumber, and was a proud longshoreman who retired from ILW Local 13 after 35 years in the union. He wore many hats throughout his lifetime. He was a real estate investor, a gold miner, a teacher, a Harley-Davidson writer, and an incredible plumber. Bob was the kind of man that would help anyone who was in need. Uh, he helped his brother Donnie operate the pumpkin patch and Christmas tree lots for the local Boy Scouts and was an advocate for education and jobs. A memorial service will be held for Bob on, uh, Friday, February 25th, at 6:30 p.m. at McNerney's Mortuary in San Pedro.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, with sadness today, I ask that all members join me in asking that the city council adjourn in the memory of Los Angeles City firefighter Glenn L. Allen of Los Angeles Fire Department Station 97, who passed away Friday after injuries that he sustained in the line of duty in service to the City of Los Angeles. As everyone has heard by now, uh, last week, the LA Fire Department responded to a fire in the Hollywood Hills. During the course of extinguishing that blaze, part of the roof collapsed, injuring four city firefighters and two county firefighters. Mr. Allen, sadly, later succumbed to his injuries on Friday, February 18th, uh, at Cedar Sinai Medical Center. Glenn was born on October 28th, 1949, the second of three children. After finishing elementary school and part of junior high in the San Fernando Valley, his family moved to the San Francisco Bay Area, where he completed high school. Glenn loved anything to do with airplanes and completed several college courses in aeronautics. One of his goals was to satisfy the requirements for his private pilot's license. In 1970, he moved back to Southern California and worked for a while as a driver for a private ambulance service. Then Glenn followed his dream and followed in the footsteps of his father, uh, who was himself, uh, an LA Fire Department engineer, and Glenn was hired by the LA City Fire Department. He graduated with the Ambulance Training Academy class of July, 1974, and completed paramedic school in March of 1976. Later, he cross-trained as a firefighter, and so in total, he spent just over 36 years serving the citizens of Los Angeles with the Fire Department. Everybody who knew Glenn, uh, know, knew that he approached life with a true servant's heart, always seeing to it that others' needs were met before his own. To his family, he was a loving example of what a husband, father, brother, and son should be. To his fire family, he was a loyal friend and a true brother. To all of us, he was a hero in the way he died, and he was a hero in the way that he lived and served this city for 36 years. Tragedy like this is a reminder of the heroism of every man and woman with the Los Angeles Fire Department, who wake up every morning not knowing what risks they will have to face, but knowing with certainty that whatever those risks are, they're going to face them in service to the people of our city. Glenn is survived by his mother, Alberta Holta, his brother, Bruce Allen, his sister, Deborah Abrams, his wife, Melanie Allen, his daughter, Rebecca, his son-in-law, Brandon, and his first grandson, who was born on Saturday, the day after Glenn died. And his grandson will also be named Glenn. And he's survived by every citizen of Los Angeles, who, who will always remember his service and will always owe him a debt of gratitude that can never be repaid. A candlelight vigil will be held tomorrow, Thursday, February 24th, from 6:30 to 10 p.m. at Fire Station 78, which is on Witsit Avenue, just north of Ventura Boulevard. His funeral is set for 9:30 Friday, February 25th, at the Cathedral of Our Lady of the Angels Church, located at 555 West Temple Street. Immediately following the funeral, there will be a memorial service at the Frank Hodgkin Memorial Training Center, starting at noon. Uh, more information about the services and the memorials will be, uh, is available at lafd.blogspot.com, and I ask that all members, uh, join in this adjournment.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorn. We'll make sure all members are on there. Thank you for the very lovely and fitting tribute. And, uh, as a reminder, council will not only adjourn today, but we will not be in session at 10 a.m. in order to allow folks to be at the funeral. Um, we will be in session at noon that day, and the entire city, we will be alongside them in mourning his passing. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Perry?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and, um, I'd like to include, uh, Mr. West and Mr. Parks, who also had a motion, and Ms. Hahn may want to be included on this for Audrey Quo... had a motion, and Ms. Han may want to be included on this for Audrey Quarles, because she was active in all of our districts, and was born in 1918 and attended Texas Southern University, where she earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in education, and furthered her training at UCLA and USC in childhood education, counseling, and guidance. And while she was attending Texas Southern, she met Henry Quarles, who was serving in the Army, and she wed him in 1942 and stayed married to him for 36 beautiful years until his passing in 1978. Upon moving to Los Angeles, Audrey and her family became members of Second Baptist Church. She taught in the Los Angeles Unified School District for over 35 years and retired in June of 1988. She received several awards as an outstanding teacher. She became involved with the Los Angeles African-American Women's Political Action Committee, New Frontier Democratic Club, and Women for Herb Wesson. She was excited to be an elected member of the County Democratic Committee, representing the 48th Assembly District. In 1988, her involvement in politics led her to be elected as a delegate to the State Democratic Convention, as well as the National Democratic Convention in Atlanta. She is survived by her five children, Henry Wayne Jr., and his wife Gail, Keith Dill, his wife Diane, Pamela Denise, Stephanie Maureen, and her husband Keith, and Karen Lynn and her husband William, 11 grandchildren, and four great-grandchildren.
Thank you. Mr. West?
Mr. President and members, and her services are Saturday at 11 o'clock at Second Baptist. I'll just say this, because Jan summed it up well, other than it's just, it's Women for Wesson, you know, just so you know the way, the rhyme to Women for... Audrey was a pistol. Little bitty thing, drove the biggest darn car that I've ever seen, got around, was everywhere. How, I mean, she, and you'd see her outside of various events, and she'd say, "I need a ticket to go to the luncheon," or what have you. At the end of the day, she always got a ticket. I can remember once, I worked for 20 minutes running around, I think this was at the state convention, to find her a ticket, and I'd go in, she had a better seat than me. I mean, that probably, well, is Edwards got it for. But no, she was loyal. She was really active. She was friends with my mom and my wife, and I'm going to miss her. We just had a Sweethearts luncheon for the Women for Wesson. I want to say it was Saturday before last, and we give, every woman gets something, and we had these bracelets, so they were able to bring her, her bracelet, and she was tickled about it, because I'm telling you, she took centerpieces, she got the goodie bags, nothing got past Audrey. She will be missed.
Thank you very much, Mr. West. If there are no other adjourned motions, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll, and we'll next be in session on noon on Friday here in John F. Rau Council Chambers. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. Have a great day.